Here.
Counselor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Counselor Shirelli.
Here.
Counselor Egli.
Here.
Counselor Deans.
Counselor Tierney.
Present.
Conseil Fleury.
Salut, ici.
Counselor King.
Here.
Counselor McKenney.
Present.
Counselor Leeper.
Present.
Counselor Brockington.
Here.
Counselor Menard.
Present.
Conseil Cloutier.
Présent.
Counselor Druze.
Here.
Counselor Moffett.
Here.
Counselor Mihen.
Present.
Counselor Hubley.
Here.
Mayor Watson.
You see.
You have a quorum, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. The procedure for the teleconference meeting, the following additional procedure guidelines are being implemented to promote orderly proceedings of this electronic meeting. Attendants, members should advise verbally that they are leaving the meeting before ending their call. Speaking order process for speaking, I'll provide each member with the opportunity to ask questions or comments. Members will be called on to speak in the order set out on the clerk's randomized voting list. The usual five-minute limit will be applied. Should you not wish to speak on any given matter, you may decline verbally when your name is called. For voting, if a full recorded vote is not taken for a given item, I will specifically ask if the item is carried, and then call for dissents to ensure that all votes are properly registered by the clerk. Points of order, privileged challenge, procedural injection should be kept to an absolute minimum to ensure the meeting proceeds smoothly and to minimize confusion. For points of order, where you have not been called upon to speak, please state your name aloud for the record before stating your point of order. Recession at any time during the process, or rather, the meeting, should technical difficulties or other unforeseen matters require a recess. Unless the clerk's office issues new instructions, members are required to remain on the line with their phones muted. Please note that these practices continue to evolve as council continues to meet remotely over the coming period. The clerk's office is working with IT services to explore and test video conferencing as an option for future meetings of council. Confirmation of minutes, adaption de process verbal, confirmation of minutes of February 26, le 26 février 2020, le 9 mars, le 25 mars, the 9th of March and the 25th of March 2020. Carried?
Carried.
Any dissents? Okay. Declaration of interests, including those originally arising from prior meetings. Déclaration de conflits d'intérêts, y compris ceux découlant de réunions antérieures. Counselor Harder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, Counselor Jan Harder, declare potential deemed indirect pecuniary interest on the following report, item 5, on the City Council Agenda 31, 2020 Budgets and Special Levis for Business Improvement Areas, BIA, and Spark Street Mall Authority, as my daughter is the Executive Director of the Barhaven Business Improvement Area.
Okay, so Counselor Harder, when we come to that item, will virtually remove herself from the debate. Don't hang up, though. Any other conflicts of interest? Des autres conflits d'intérêt? Okay. Communications as presented, regrets. Counselor Deans advised that she would be absent from the council meeting of April 8, 2020. See motion 20-1 of September 25, 2019. Motions, we have Counselor Moffett, moving motion seconded by Counselor Dudas. To introduce reports.
That the following reports be received and considered. Agricultural Affairs Committee Report 12, Build Heritage Subcommittee Report 12, Finance and Economic Development Committee Report 12A and 13. The following reports from the Finance Services Department entitled "City Debencher Issuance, 2020 Budgets and Special Levis for Business Improvement Areas", and "Spark Street Mall Authority", Report on Budget Expenses Pursuant to Ontario Regulation 28409, Disposition of 2019 Tax and Rate-Supported Operating Surplus Deficit and 2020 Tax Ratios and Other Tax Policies, and the following reports from Planning, Infrastructure and Economic Developments, Department entitled "Designate 300 Coventry Road as Amicable Capital Facility", and "Sale of Land, 1960 Merrillville Road and Part of Slack Road to Patrick Butler in Trust", and that the reports from city clerk entitled "Summary of Oral and Written Public Submissions" were items subject to Planning Act explanation requirements at the City Council Meeting of February 26, 2020.
Okay, on the emotion, carried?
Carried.
Any diss- And any dissents? Okay. Good morning, everyone. Bonjour tout le monde. This is our second teleconference council meeting, and I welcome on the line my colleagues. I also want to thank residents and city staff who are tuning in today online or watching on Rogers Television. I wish to confirm that there are no more than five individuals in the council chambers at City Hall. This is certainly a different way of conducting our council meetings, but I think we're doing a good job of adapting to the current situation in the face of COVID-19. I know this is not an easy time for many of us and our constituents. Some of you are grieving a family member or a friend who has passed away. Some of you have fallen ill, or you're sick caring, or you're caring for someone who has gotten sick, and it's affected everyone's daily lives. Ceci affect la situation.
This affects the employment situation of thousands of residents, including here at the city of Ottawa.
announced it in consultation with Dr. Etches that we would extend the closure of city facilities, services, and large gatherings, public gatherings until June 30 of this year. As a result of that, we also announced that approximately 4,280 part-time employees were being placed on declared emergency leave, which is a decision we made with the financial well-being of those staff members in mind, working with QP 503. This decision enables those affected employees to apply for federal support programs while maintaining their seniority and the option to buy back into their Omer's pension once they return to work. I know this decision will have a deep impact on those employees and their families, and we will do everything in our power to treat them with the compassion and dignity they deserve throughout these trying times. I know that kids and their parents are having to adopt to continuing their studies from home. Many of the activities we enjoy doing with our friends and family, like taking music lessons, playing in the park, participating in team sports, or taking a dance class, we just can't do anymore. This is difficult for everyone, but even through these difficult circumstances, our community continues to step up. I find it truly heartwarming to see the number of residents and businesses in our city who are coming forward to assist those in need in this time of great need. Yesterday on Twitter, I asked residents to share stories about how people are stepping forward to help their fellow residents, and I was overwhelmed with the over 100 beautiful examples of kindness and ingenuity. And it makes me proud to say I'm mayor of this great and compassionate city. It's residents like Tanya Bennett and Miriam Romer-Arafug, who are heading up the hashtag #HeadbandForHeroes initiative. Ms. Bennett, the owner of local sewing company Poppy Monroe, sought input from healthcare professionals in one of her sewing groups to design much-needed headbands for medical staff, the kind that has buttons to which you can attach surgical masks. Ms. Romer-Arafugic, owner of a local fabric store, Mimi Fabrics, is providing free fabric kits and fabric at cost to the huge team of sewers working on this project. Our thanks to Ms. Bennett and Ms. Romer-Arafugic, as well as their incredible team for helping to support our medical professionals. It's also residents like Veronica Stoltzmann, a small business owner in Orleans. Ms. Stoltzmann, who runs a spa out of her home, has temporarily closed down her business due to the pandemic, but she has shifted her focus to supporting the community. In addition to starting a Facebook support group for local Orleans residents, she has raised funds and worked with Saint-Hubert Restaurant to provide meals for medical staff at the Ottawa Hospital's general campus, A L'Opital Montfort. It's residents mobilizing behind groups like Napian Neighbors, who are matching volunteers with residents in isolation who need help running errands like groceries and medication, dog walking, and picking up pet supplies. And later today, the city, United Way, Volunteer Ottawa, and the Champlain Community Support Network will launch a citywide volunteering initiative to help our most vulnerable residents during the pandemic, including seniors and adults with disabilities. For those who want to help, I encourage you to register at volunteer-ottawa.ca. It's local chefs like Joe Thotengold of Tylee and Coconut Lagoon, Adam Vetteral of North and Navy, Tim Stock of Time and Again, and Patrick Garland of Absinthe, who are providing meals to homeless residents and low-income families. Another wonderful example of our community's generosity is support that is being provided to the Ottawa Food Bank, which is helping more households than ever in light of the job losses we've seen in the last few weeks. Last Wednesday, I tweeted a video conversation I had with Harley Finkelstein from Shopify and Michael Mademan from the Ottawa Food Bank. Harley and his wife Lindsay very generously committed to donating $1 for every retweet of our conversation, up to $10,000. And it was great to see Arlene Dickinson from Dragon's Den and Mayor Nahid Nenshi and others follow our lead in Calgary and raise over $200,000 in a similar period of time. We didn't know this social media campaign would lift off in such a successful way, but it raised a total of $310,000 in 48 hours to feed those going hungry in our community. We've received donations from all over the world, including the hip-hop group Wu-Tang Clan and former U.S. Ambassador Bruce Hayman. An odd combination in one sentence, I might add. Je suis ravi de tout le support qui a été.
I'm delighted with all the support given to this fundraising campaign.
Opportunity to thank Harley and Lindsay for kickstarting this campaign. I want to thank every single person who has made a donation to the Food Bank as part of this tremendous community effort. I'd also like to, like to remind you that you can donate as well by visiting Ottawa, And the smaller acts of kindness also go a long way, like the Alta Vista Community Association donating $2,500 in support of the Heron Road Food Center. Contributions, big and small, are helping, and they are inspiring others to give. We're also seeing local businesses contribute to the response in significant ways. At the Ausgood Care Center, a long-term care facility in Metcalf, President and CEO Laurie Norris Dudley had a great idea to bring in some RVs to the property and have them on-site as a safe place to stay for staff in the event of a COVID-19 outbreak at the facility. Ms. Norris Dudley was going to rent the RVs for staff, but RV Canada in Napian has generously lent them free of charge until the end of the pandemic. I want to thank RV Canada and General Manager Mike Garrick for their outstanding support. Another example of a local business stepping up to make a contribution is LD Tool &amp; Die. The Stittsville Company is quickly ramping up production of much-needed COVID-19 test kits, and owner Laurie Dixon is actually hiring about 70 new workers in order to meet the demand. And as many across the country have done, north of Seven Distillery, located on Salaraw Boulevard, has gone from producing spirits to hand sanitizer. The micro-distillery is producing about 500 bottles of hand sanitizer a day, which is wonderful news for those who absolutely need it, like our frontline workers and those working in long-term care and retirement homes. Et je suis très impressionné.
And I'm quite impressed with the initiative of all these companies.
Company Bicon Engineering, founded, led by founder Brian Kreber, has begun to produce clear plastic shields for healthcare workers and hopes to produce even more in the coming weeks. Des établissements comme l'univers-
Institutions such as the University of Ottawa have found many ways to support our community.
Ottawa has donated more than 250 boxes of needed medical equipment, 260,000 gloves, 25,000 face masks, and over 2,000 badly-needed N95 masks to our local hospitals. And I know Algonquin College also made a similar donation of masks and gowns as well. This equipment was donated by several faculties, as well as medical students who spearheaded a collection drive in the community. You Ottawa students have also put their ingenuity and entrepreneurial spirit to work to design and manufacture much-needed face shields and ventilator parts using 3D printers in collaboration, in collaboration with L'Opital Montfort. C'est une très beau partenariat entre-
What a great partnership between the U of O and the Montfort Hospital.
Want to thank the University of Ottawa for lending us an entire former student residence on King Edward Avenue, which is currently being transformed into an isolation space for families who are homeless. Merci à l'Université d'Ottawa pour-
Thank you to the Ottawa youth for all their contributions and their efforts. You are very good partners.
This support, supported by Invest Ottawa, are also doing excellent work. Ottawa Company Spartan Bioscience, led by founder and CEO Peter Lem, is developing an innovative handheld rapid testing device for COVID-19, which can confirm test results in less than an hour. Over the last few days, Spartan Bioscience has announced several deals with the federal and provincial governments, which have committed to procure the test as soon as it's available. And another fantastic example is Aetanix and its founder and CEO Michel Parquet, who has created a COVID-19 remote screening assessment tool. This assessment tool is designed to help healthcare professionals and practitioners in hospitals, nursing homes, and clinics to screen patients in the privacy of their own homes, preventing further contagion, contamination in the healthcare network. I also wanted to mention the great work of Elizabeth Odette Bordeaux and her team at local company Welby, who are leveraging the company's platform to address challenges related to social isolation, particularly those of our elderly residents living in long-term care and retirement homes. This is a difficult reality for many families right now. As they worry about their loved ones, they cannot visit in retirement homes or long-term care homes. Toutes ces technologies émergentes.
All these emerging technologies can help us fight against COVID-19.
To being proud of the generosity and outstanding work coming from our residents and local businesses, I'm also proud of the way the city is responding. I especially wanted to mention the work being done by the Human Needs Task Force and the Economic Partners Task Force. Under the leadership of General Manager Donna Gray, the Human Needs Task Force has been busy planning and helping our city's most vulnerable residents weather this storm. Donna and her team are bringing together organizations to collaborate and work together in new ways, and this includes the Ottawa Food Bank, Meals on Wheels, Montfort Renaissance, and the Champlain Community Support Network, made up of more than 20 local not-for-profit organizations. These partners are working to deliver food, hampers, hot meals and groceries to seniors and other at-risk residents across Ottawa, including in rural areas. The Good Companion Senior Center, without walls, has expanded its services with a focus on providing vulnerable and isolated seniors with emotional support by telephone. Rural Ottawa Support Services, or ROS, is working with Good Companions to provide similar telephone outreach and practical supports to isolated seniors through their program called A Friendly Voice. Notre équipe fait des appels à tous les résidents.
So our team is calling all isolated residents who need to hear a real voice.
Dollars to the Good Companions to offer driving services to vulnerable seniors and to eliminate the copayment fees that clients usually pay for this service. With the assistance of provincial funding, we're setting up three emergency childcare centers in Ottawa to assist our healthcare and essential workers, and these will be up and running this coming Monday. The team has also been hard at work to find hotel rooms to support physical distancing for our families currently living in shelters, as well as to accommodate larger families. To date, 31 families have moved into these new hotel rooms, with more to come this week. The team is also seeking an additional 100 rooms to support physical distancing among our single men and women clients. I want to thank Donna and the members of the Human Needs Task Force for their work to protect all our residents, particularly those who, who most need our help right now. Similarly, the Economic Partners Task Force, under the leadership of Steve Willis and Cindy Van Buskirk, have been hard at work to find ways to help our struggling small businesses, who have seen challenges pile up these last few weeks. Myself, Counselor Elshon Thierry, and Counselor Dudas join our key business leaders who make up the task force on a weekly call to discuss emerging issues in the business community. Over the past few weeks, there have been several efforts made to support our local businesses, starting with the Property Tax Hardship Deferral Program, which we approved at council on March 25. Since then, we have launched our Buy Local promotional campaign, which encourages residents to support small businesses by ordering products and gift certificates online, or ordering takeout or delivery from local restaurants. To date, the campaign has generated over 30,000 visits to the ottawa.ca/bi local page, where residents can link to various BIAs and other sites providing listings of restaurants and businesses available to serve you online or with takeout and delivery. Nos discussions avec le groupe de travail-
Our discussions with the working group are very useful to understand the challenges of our small businesses.
In addition, we have created the Business Support and Economic Recovery page on ottawa.ca, which provides helpful information and links to various city, provincial, and federal business support programs. I would encourage my council colleagues to share these resources widely in their communications with residents. We will continue our collaboration with the Economic Partners Task Force in the coming weeks as we begin planning for our city's economic recovery. En travail avec nos partenariats.
So we're working with our partners, and we will soon begin to plan the economic recovery of the city.
Nados, communities need to rally around each other and to make sure we're spending our dollars locally, so we get our neighbors back to work as soon as possible. It will no doubt take a while before we can get back to normal, and I think this is a good opportunity to remind residents that we all need to do our part to get there. With cases in Ottawa nearly tripling in the last week, think about that for a moment, tripling in the last week, we all have a responsibility to stay home to stop the spread of COVID-19. It means we have to abide by the provincial orders and practice physical distancing while limiting our gatherings to those who live in the same household. It means we need to limit what we do in city parks, and I'll repeat this, you can walk through a park, but don't hang around or play. It means we need to listen to our bylaw officers, who are looking out for the health and safety of our citizens. And I want to make it perfectly clear that I fully support the efforts of our women and men in bylaw enforcement. Between Friday and Sunday, bylaw received 526 calls regarding residents possibly defying ministerial orders related to COVID-19. This led to only 43 tickets being issued, so in 8% of cases, after what I believe was careful observation and consideration by bylaw officers. But we must all do our part to flatten the curb and save lives, and that is what our bylaw officers are making sure is happening in all parts of our city. What is at stake here is not being second-guessed because they might be inconveniencing certain residents. What is at stake here is saving lives, and that is why they have my full support in doing their very, very difficult, tough job. Judging by the amazing things I've seen taking place in our community since this outbreak began, I'm very confident we will come out of this even stronger, more resilient, and a more caring community. I want to thank all of my city council colleagues for their hard work and dedication to get us there. I follow all of your activities on social media. Many of you are out delivering groceries and helping those in need, and I very much appreciate the long hours that you are putting in while working remotely from City Hall. Si nous faisons tout notre part pour lutter contre-
If we all do our share to fight against COVID-19, we will make it together, and everything will be fine.
Paul Noah has been working very, very hard and doing a terrific job as Chair of the Board of Health to say a few words and introduce Dr. Etches, who has a presentation, and I believe the present PowerPoint presentation Caitlin was sent to members of council. So Counselor Egli, the floor is yours, please. Merci.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. It is an understatement to say that we are living in uncertain and troubling times. Everybody, every day, rather, is a fresh challenge as new information and new situations develop. There is an unending stream of issues to respond to, such as does street sweeping enhance the risk of contracting COVID-19? It does not. How do we provide advice to residents who want to be out cleaning parks and pathways at this time of year as usual? Well, we don't live with usual or normal any, anymore. And the short answer is, we do not want you out at this time because there are risks to gathering in groups and to picking up things like discarded latex gloves. We will, however, be providing guidance about how to properly spring-clean your own property. With all this going on, one of the constants is the professional work being done by Ottawa Public Health under the steady hand of Dr. Vera Etches and her senior leadership team. I'm on mute. I'm in regular contact with them for- Much to listen, but- Any given day, and I'm continually impressed with their dedication to looking out for the health and welfare of citizens of Ottawa. This, however, um, sorry, is not a job they can do on their own. Each and every day, they provide us with advice and direction. We must, as a community, do our best to follow those instructions. No one is a fan of these restrictions and social distancing practices. They are new, and they are in many ways hard. But we can all be supporters because it is quite simply the right thing to do. I don't know how many emails I've responded to in recent days on the subject of gathering publicly or being in parks. The message is simple, and we should all follow it. Stay out of the parks, except to walk through them. Cannot gather there, you cannot use the play structures, the sports fields, the basketball, tennis courts, picnic tables, or benches. That is the message in a nutshell. Simple to understand, but difficult to do, especially as the weather gets warmer and the restrictions stay in place. But do it, we must. We celebrate Passover in Easter in coming days, and Ramadan is soon to come. And this year, we must do it virtually and remotely. Not our first choice, but our responsibility as members of the Ottawa community. We all need to look out for one another and practice physical distancing. Coming weeks and months, there'll be other times when we would traditionally gather together, such as the May 24 weekend and Canada Day, and we may well be asking with that time to also participate remotely and virtually. This is the best advice we have from our MOH and her team, and we need to respect that. Let's stick together by staying apart, and let us do it with resolve. We have a curve that needs planking, and trust me, we will appreciate all our hard efforts when we achieve that. One of the hardest things I have ever done in my working life is to be one of the first in the city each morning to find out how many new cases of COVID-19 we have and how many more deaths. I would dearly love to no longer have those phone calls, illnesses, and deaths. Best we can, the best way we can achieve this is to stay the course and follow the doctor's advice. As we strive to find ways to carry on our lives in these challenging times. There are eggs here. Let's innovate, collaborate, and cooperate. Also fruit. We can, and we will be this thing together. Thank you. Over to you, Dr. Etches.
So, Dr. Etches, the floor is yours.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was on mute. You'd think I'd know how to do that by now. I'm going to use some slides, and so I would ask for whoever's projecting them to follow along. I'll, I'll tell you which slide I'm on. I'm going to go to Slide 2, which has an overview of what I'll cover today. We talked last time at council about the different aspects of a response to COVID, needing to look at handling and controlling the disease in public health and healthcare sectors. We also know there are these public health measures, the physical distancing we need to talk about, as well as, as the harm that's done and the need to support our community, where the city is really taking a lead. And so I'll, I'll touch on these subjects again. On Slide 3, I'm sharing with you the information that we have on our website. It's updated daily about how we're looking and tracking the cases of laboratory confirmed illness.
One for me.
So I don't know if that's Counselor Harder, if your phone actually isn't on mute. We're just hearing a bit of background noise.
No, it's not me.
Oh, okay, sorry. Anyway, if anyone-
It's Counselor Me and I think, again.
Sorry about that.
It's for me and again. What do you mean, Counselor Me and again?
Okay, let's get back to Dr. Etches.
Keep going, if everyone else can be on mute, please. Sorry about that. What I want to say about the cases is that we are continuing to see them rise, and there is a lag from when someone's infected to when we receive the lab report. That's about 10 days. So that's why we show a grade in area where we expect that more reports will come in over time. I've spoken previously about community transmission, and we don't have all of the exposure history for everyone right up to date, but we know that it's, of those who have exposure information, it's about 13% that right now are due to community transmission, where we have no history of travel and no known contact with, with another case. So on Slide 4, you know, people, people are interested in what's happening in terms of the severity. and our hospital capacity, and it's manageable right now. Currently, we have thirty-six people in hospital with COVID-19 and fourteen in intensive care. Of course, our family members who have experienced the death of a loved one are people who are holding in our thoughts, and that is six families so far. We continue to see the number of recovered cases grow, up to over a hundred now, and unfortunately, the number of institutions that are experiencing outbreaks is also growing. So that includes retirement homes, long-term care homes, hospitals, and one in a group home. Going to talk now on Slide Five, a bit about modeling, because we saw the province release some information about their projections to the end of the month of April, and we have Ottawa-specific data. But I want to reinforce that models help us in some ways, but they have many assumptions built into them, and they're only as good as the data that's used to build them. So the best use of models is to help us test out different scenarios and plan ahead to look at the impact of different things we could do in our community. So this information is now publicly available. A section has been added to the OttawaPublicHealth.ca website to share two different models that are publicly available for Ottawa. The first one, on Slide Six, is a model that is based on laboratory confirmed cases, and we know that's not the full picture of illness in our community, and so that is going to have some limitations. I think people are looking for hope, they're looking for a sign that we're flattening the curve, and what we see in a model like this... Sorry, I'm getting a lot of feedback. This curve looks very, very much like we can predict into the future that the rate of increase in cases is going to slow down, and that is encouraging. But the challenge is, we want to be able to test more, we want to expand, you know, this testing that we've been doing so far has had to be limited to healthcare workers and people who are hospitalized and people with more severe illness or who live in a long-term care home. And so as we're able to ramp up our testing, the model will adjust to give us a better picture of the cases in our community. Another way of looking at it that is perhaps more robust, but it still is a model, it to base things on the deaths that we're seeing, because that is something that wouldn't be missed, like undetected cases in our community. And so we use a London School of Hygiene and Tropical Medicine model that's, again, publicly available, which is predicting right now the number of cases in Ottawa is likely between eleven thousand and thirty-four thousand. And so, again, as we get more information, we'll continue to update the website. So I'm going to move to Slide Seven, which also, I think, is encouraging, because it shows us that physical distancing protects our intensive care unit capacity and our ability to care for the sickest people in Ottawa. So this data is coming from Doug Manuel and Alan Forster and their team at the Ottawa Hospital, along with the Ottawa Public Health Epidemiologists, who have been using hospitalization data and other data locally to make these models that show really how is the projection going to match up with the capacity we have in our hospitals. And what I want to draw your attention to on this slide is that the blue shading indicates the projection for hospitalizations. If we reduce our contact, person-to-person contact in the community by fifty percent, the orange shading shows projections with a sixty percent reduction in person-to-person contact, and the green shading shows projections with a seventy percent reduction in person-to-person contact. So the more effective we are at physical distancing, the flatter the curve will be, and the more we have a delayed peak. This gives us time to build that ICU capacity for our healthcare partners to increase the number of beds available, and for us to fine-tune our public health measures, and maybe even, can't promise that, develop a vaccine. So what I will again say is that models are useful for this kind of thinking and estimation, but they get less reliable the further into the future. So I'm going to go on to that picture of further into the future on Slide Eight. This slide shows, again, the more effective we are at physical distancing, the greater capacity we'll have to manage illness. On this slide, the blue shows that with fifty percent physical distancing, it will not be enough to help all of people who are in need in terms of the demand on the intensive care units compared to the capacity that we have locally. But with seventy percent physical distancing, the projections show that we will be able to provide an ICU bed for all of those in need. So our public health measures so far have made a difference, and we need people to stay focused on this, to stay home, to stop the spread, and to stay safe. So this is good news, that our actions are making a difference, but of course, it's a challenge to maintain, and I really want to thank each and everyone for doing their part. I'm going to next speak about some of the measures that we're increasing and that would allow us to take a more precise approach, a more targeted containment strategy, and to help our healthcare system also have the capacity. So on Slide Nine now, I'm talking about the public health work of case and contact management. So we continue to add capacity to our team to do the lengthy interviews with each person who is infected with COVID-19, to find their contacts, to follow up with them, to keep in contact with them until their self-isolation is discontinued. And this is work that's happening seven days a week from eight-thirty to nine PM, and with after-hours on-call staff working through the night. On Slide Ten, this is an update on the healthcare system capacity that's being created. We continue to see people being tested at the Brewer Park Arena, and we are in discussions, we've made a conclusion with our healthcare partners that there is capacity there to increase the population being tested, so I can mention a bit more about that in a moment. And there is a new care clinic opened, integrated with the Queensway Carlton Hospital in the West, that is helping deflect people from emergency departments who need care, but also helping primary care when people may not be able to access their usual primary care provider. And an East End clinic affiliated with the Mount Four Hospital will be open as soon as that demand is established, so we know that it's needed. On the first day that this clinic opened, on Monday, there were four people sent to emergency from the clinic, so it is being well-used and appropriate place for people to understand if they need more support and get that assessment. We continue to see the Rute Community Centre open, and update on the paramedicine program. This is a capacity that's increased. It'll serve people in both rural and urban communities, and they are focused on helping long-term care homes as well, so that there can be support to people in long-term care homes. We also have a regional family practitioner labor pool that is creating a home visit model, again, to enhance care for people at home that need to be transferred. The patient flow strategy refers to regional work that is underway to make sure that collectively across all of the hospitals in the whole Champlain area and other service providers, that the right decisions are being made to make sure people get care in the right place. And this includes a coordinated centralized command center related to long-term care. So on the next slide, on Slide Eleven, have some comments about the testing capacity, which we have made progress in terms of that delay people were experiencing. The Eastern Ontario Public Health Laboratories and the Public Health Lab in Ottawa are both able to handle the current testing demand. And the province launched an Ontario Laboratories Information System, which is a portal where residents can now view their own results. So again, a point of frustration that's been addressed. So we're working with others to look at how we can expand testing into new populations as we have the capacity, and we're looking at being able to test people who are household members of healthcare workers or essential workers, and we're also looking at offering testing to people who are providing essential services, like grocery store workers. So this is good news. The personal protective equipment comment relates to needing supplies and masks, and it's a top subject of discussion, and really also regional planning, so that people are taking a regional approach to make sure that the PPE we do have gets to the organizations most in need. And so speaking of masks, I'm going to dwell on this for a moment as well as a new message to the public. I want to highlight there's two types of masks. There are healthcare sector masks, there are medical masks that need to be prioritized for healthcare workers and first responders. Around the world, there's a shortage, and we need to make sure that those masks are reserved for the people who are going to be saving lives. Otherwise, homemade cloth masks may protect wearers, but they are more used in terms of this protection that they can give to others. And this is out of, you know, evidence that's evolving that shows us, people who are infected may not realize it, and especially in the two days before they develop symptoms and they know, oh, I have a cough and a fever, those forty-eight hours are potentially a time when they're shedding virus, and so if people who feel well are going to be within two meters of someone else, if they can't avoid it when they go grocery shopping, then this is when we are recommending that people do make use of that barrier that can keep their secretions to themselves. Physical distancing is still key. Masks are not a solution, they're not perfect, and they need to be used well and safely. So there's guidance for us on our public health website around making sure we wash our hands, that we wash our masks, all of these things are important. We would also want to go on then to the next slide to talk about physical distancing more in terms of what we are measuring in the community. I said last time we wanted to do a poll, so there was a poll taken between March twenty-seventh to March thirty-first, so that's a week ago now, and we find that, in fact, ninety-four percent of this random sample survey that was administered online, ninety-four percent think that COVID-19 is serious and the closures are necessary to slow the spread of COVID-19. On this slide, you can see that people are doing what is needed to keep the curve flat. We look at, you know, eighty-five percent who are working to stay two meters away from other people as much as possible, and you compare that back to our models, which showed that that is a level of social distancing, physical distancing, that will help us maintain our healthcare system capacity. So on Slide Fourteen, in the poll, we also asked what was concerning people, and you can see that Ottawa residents are largely motivated by concern about others, concern about older people, family members, and they know also they're motivated by knowing that they're doing their part. So these were the top two motivations and concerns. Also on this slide, it's a large portion of the population that has concerns about their household income, and so this is something, again, we'll hear more about how the city and other levels of government are helping on the financial front. I'm going to go to Slide Fifteen, just to highlight that Ottawa Public Health has a role to play in working with many, many sectors, from community centers to small and large businesses, faith-based organizations, and schools and others. We're providing guidance to essential services, like working with the food bank to make sure that they have guidance about how to carry out their work with infection prevention and control practices. We're working with people who are not essential services, but businesses, to think through physical distancing and how to message to their staff. We're looking at, you know, we continue to work within the city of Ottawa as one city, one team, you know, working with social services and transportation, special events, many others, working with the housing team and the Human Needs Task Force to support families in a shelter who've been exposed to, be able to provide other options for families already in need. And I just really want to express thanks to the partners, that this is really key work. I won't dwell on Slide Sixteen about meeting human needs, because that is led by the city, but it is very key, and I'm really thankful for the city staff working on this and the volunteers coming to help. So the last slide before concluding is focused on addressing mental health. Supporting mental health continues to be a priority for Ottawa Public Health, and again, something we do in partnership with the Ottawa Distress Centre, the Royal Ottawa, YSB, CHIO, you know, the Ottawa Coalition to End Violence Against Women, the police. And so we are maintaining a website, which is to support residents with resources, to link them to crisis and other supports. We're promoting the services that exist so that there's greater uptake of local treatment services, and we're developing workplace information for businesses and employees. We've been supporting school boards to promote programs and supports to students and their families, and we're working with partners to develop a strategy to address people who may be at greater risk for neglect and violence, and raise awareness of the supports available. So we'll continue, and we do want to thank again all these partners, everyone who's doing their part to support the mental health of their close family and friends. The last slide highlights that these are areas of work that we'll continue to focus on into the future. Public communications is a big one, and I want to thank councillors for the work that they are doing to address inquiries that are coming forward from residents, from businesses, and community organizations. Thank you for this work, and again, thank you to Steve Katalakis and all of the city for their support. This is still the time to stay home, to stay safe, to protect yourself and others. We are all in this together.
I'd like to thank everyone who works to protect others. Thank you, Doctor.
Just will be on the line, we're just going to go through the rest of the presentations and then open it up for questions and comments. So, City Manager Steve Katalakis, we have you, I believe with some opening comments, then Donna Gray, and then Wendy Stephenson, and then to council for questions and comments. So, City Manager, are you on the line?
I am, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor and councillors. Today, we're going to be providing an update on the organization's plan to sustain and manage this pandemic in terms of three pillars, our people, our community, and our finances. I think council, it's time to give a comprehensive update on where we are on these three subject areas. I'll be starting by providing a brief update on our people and services. Donna Gray, who's General Manager of Community and Social Services, will then provide an update on our continued response to support community in our most vulnerable. Wendy Stephenson, our Chief Financial Officer, will provide the overview on our finances. And I understand, Mayor, after that or after the questions you're choosing, councillor El Shantiri will be providing a verbal update on the 2020 Spring Fresh Chat and Flood Preparedness. Before I get into the presentation, and I see it's still not up on the screen, I just want to provide a bit of context. During the last four weeks, and it's only been four weeks, the city has taken significant action to help flatten the curve to protect our people and our community. On March eleventh, we entered into activated operations. On March sixteenth, we closed our public facilities and suspended non-essential services. On March twenty-fifth, the mayor declared a state of emergency in Ottawa, and yesterday we announced the extension of the closure of our facilities and services from large public gatherings until June thirtieth, 2020, and announced some temporary workforce adjustments in the very best interest of people. Our response has involved unprecedented measures in a very short period of time, and I know a tremendous effort has been made by all of us to ensure the continuity of our services that people depend on every day while keeping people safe. So I want to thank our mayor, I want to thank every council member on the line, and all the council members who can't be on the line, for their incredible support of staff, for, as Dr. Etches said, for dealing with so many inquiries, for bringing issues, for attention. as Dr. Etches said, for dealing with so many inquiries, for bringing issues, for attention to flagging issues. And an incredible team effort.
Steve, someone is not putting their phone on mute, so could you please ensure you keep it on mute, because this is about the third time we've had to stop a presentation. Okay, back to Steve.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to thank Dr. Etches, the incredible leadership and guidance to our team and to the community. It's been a stellar performance. Our senior leadership team, all the general managers, and our people for everything that's been done to date to keep our city running in very challenging circumstances. Our main focus from the beginning has been to keep our people working and maintain a healthy workforce. That is the fundamental pillar in terms of our ability to be able to continue delivering essential services. We need to prepare for the long haul, and we're concentrating on retention, engagement, and productivity. Not only do we need to ensure business continuity during this crisis, we need to ensure that we have a reserve of employees who are ready to be deployed to essential service role when the time comes, be ready to shift gears for return to normal operations through a thoughtful and phased approach. We have a duty to continue to provide services to our residents, and we know that if we take care of our people, they will take care of our community. So we're doing everything possible we can to ensure that we sustain our workforce as we move through this crisis. So I'd like to begin on Slide 1, and I'm not sure who's going to put the, or Slide 3, actually, if you could just flip to that. I don't see it on the screen, I just see it on the background screen in council. But I'll commence. Our initial response when this unfolded was to actively support Ottawa Public Health guidance and recommendations, including physical distancing measures to help flatten the curve. And we maximize the city's ability to continue to deliver essential services while preserving the city's workforce. From the beginning, it was all about workforce business continuity. We need our people to come to work to deliver these critical services that people rely on to be able to stay home. It's a fundamental principle, so we had three principles. And we wanted to ensure that we were able to put our services and our community and employees first, maximize job stability, and deliver essential services as this situation evolves. We identified three pillars from the opening bell, which was engage and enable our employees, redeploy employees to essential service roles, and balance the financial pressures with current and future needs. Slide 4, please. On employee and manager communications, we maintained a regular dialogue and are communicating daily with management employees to ensure productivity. We provided supports and tools and up-to-date practical guidance on Ottawa.ca and various communications channels we have, SharePoint and all zones. We've engaged our unions, collective bargaining agents from day one. They are an important partner in this, and they have been incredibly supportive of the city, of our community, and of our workforce. We have incredible working relationships with the union leadership in our city. We're very, very blessed and fortunate to have that. And I'm shouting them out because without their participation, it would be very difficult to have gotten to where we are right now. Remote work environment, we moved right away to direct people to work from home or operationally feasible. Alternative work arrangements and flexible hours were made available to accommodate people's individual needs, and we provided the tools and resources to make sure that people could do their job at home. Slide 5, please. In terms of health, safety, and wellness, we implemented physical distancing measures in our workplace. We closed our city facilities, council programming. We deployed PPE for essential and emergency services. We increased our cleaning in all high-traffic areas and a number of our service areas. We introduced a standardized screening process for all our employees to keep them safe and healthy at work. And we updated return-to-work guidelines and simplified sick leave certification process. We got the red tape out of the way of our employees. Mental health is a topic that we discuss daily. There's 24/7 access to our city's Employee and Family Assistance Program, and there's been an uptake on that, which I'm very happy to see. We actively support and maintain dialogue with management and staff to monitor mental health in the workplace, so we have our pulse on what's going on. And we have a calendar event with messaging articles, webinars, on all aspects of financial stress, social connections, and social distancing and physical health, in collaboration and guidance with our Ottawa Public Health colleagues. Redeploying staff to essential services is the next phase we're in right now. And the city's in consultation with our union partners regarding staff deployment to support the emergency response. And I know many councils must be wondering about, gee, not all staff can be working if they're frontline workers and they're at home. And we've taken a very, I think, progressive view on this. We understand we're in the long haul, we understand that our workforce absenteeism is increasing, we understand that we are going to have to plan very diligently with council how we're going to roll out our services in a phased approach. And we understand that there's many services right now in our current portfolio that are very much stressed because of surge, because surge demand. And many of those services, particularly in our social services and public health and many areas in our organization, because of absenteeism and because of demands from the public, need additional help. And we are looking at, right now, identifying employees who can be redeployed to critical and essential services. How can we provide innovative and alternate ways for them delivering the service, to optimize redeployment? And we're developing a simplified skills inventory, the technology and the enablers, where we have a coordinated reassignment process, all in consultation with the union, and that's being led by Valerie Turner, our General Manager of Innovative Client Services. She has a task team that's looking and working with every department to make sure that we can maximize the use of our employees, and our employees can be moved to where they're needed most, because we need to be able to sustain our services throughout this. Financial pressures, recurrent future needs, this became evident immediately when we started like business, like other levels of government, the financial strain, and you're going to hear this from Wendy Stephenson shortly. We need to put our people first. However, we need to balance that with the notion that our finances is something we have to look at. But we recognize that the city of Ottawa will be a major enabler in the overall economic recovery in the city. We have a number of functions that are critical for people to be able to get back up and running in their businesses and in their lives. And as we plan ahead to prepare to return to normal operations by reopening and establish services in a thoughtful and phased approach, we have to develop ongoing strategies to keep our employees safe and ensure the full complement of city resources are optimized. So we're balancing here our financial needs with the need to keep delivering city services with a workforce that, quite frankly, is fragile right now. And we have to make sure they continue to come to work and support us in any way we can and have their skills available to us. Temporary workforce adjustments, that was announced on Monday, we closed facilities, as the mayor said, and the large public gathers till June 30th. That decision triggered the notion that we have to do something with the 4,000 part-time recreation, culture, and facility service employees and 280 part-time Ottawa Public Library employees, because once the facilities and programming are canceled, we have a situation where we're doing our part-time and casual employees a disservice by letting them stay month to month, hoping that we get started one month or three weeks later. We needed a line of sight, we needed them to be able to access whatever financial resources they count through the federal government and to plan their lives, and we needed our residents to have a line of sight in terms of when services may be reintroduced, and they can plan their family matters and their own personal matters, the ones that depend on city services. So we've actively engaged and collaborated with our union partners, and we think this is the best outcome for our recreational and cultural facility service employees and library employees. So, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my presentation. I'd like now turn it over to Donna Gray to speak about our community initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve, and thank you, Mayor Watson, and members of council, for the opportunity today to provide you an update on the impact of COVID-19 on our community. It was very clear at the outset of this pandemic that once there was a community spread of COVID-19, our city's most vulnerable residents and the staff that support them, along with our frontline healthcare workers, were going to be most at risk for contracting and potentially spreading the virus. Because of an outbreak in any of these areas that we provide service could potentially spread very quickly, everyone at all levels of government, in our social housing, our shelters, all of our community support agencies and services, began very quickly to focus a major portion of all of their efforts towards human services. As well, the sudden and significant loss of work and income means that thousands of people in our local community are reaching out to social services and community agencies, many for the very first time. They need emergency help before federal government supports are able to kick in, and they are navigating our system for the first time, and they are unaware and unclear of how long that support will last or be needed. We, at the city, are doing a coordinated, intergovernmental, and inter-agency approach. The Human Needs Task Force has all of the right people around the table who are working very closely together to meet the basic needs of our community, and to do that in a proactive, public health-supported way, to ensure that both our workers in our community and our agencies and our community is supported. The funds don't meet all the needs. There are new pressures that come to the city and to our agencies every day. The needs on the ground are changing rapidly, and when we identify gaps, we address a plant, we close it, and we expand and rely on the capacity of our local service providers who are experienced to do the work, and we rely on them to do what they do best. Duplicating efforts at this point in time is not an option. It is our priority to ensure that we are maximizing all of our funding and our resources to the gaps and needs of those who need it most. We're communicating where there are gaps to the provincial and federal government, and we are weekly communicating and regularly communicating directly with those ministries, and they are responding as quickly as they can. We appreciate and recognize the support and the effort it takes to put programs, policies, and guidance out to our services. And our services are adapting quickly and responsively. An example recently is around our employment in social services, where we had to deploy over 350 laptops to an office-based service in three weeks, so that our communities and our caseworkers could continue to deliver services to those in financial need, at the same time programs and policies were changing. I want to now also talk about how we're protecting the house in our city facilities that we are serving our most-risk individuals. The city has a unique role, and we are a direct provider, service provider, to many people who live in our facilities and to over 21,000 people in our community. And these people in our long-term care homes, emergency shelters, and childcare services, we have a strong commitment to their safety and their protection of the virus. And as I said earlier, our most vulnerable residents are most at risk to these effects of the virus. We have instituted robust screening, isolation programs, and enhanced measures by all levels of government to protect those in our care. In addition, we have enhanced financial support that have been provided, and we've had an overall 45% increase today in applications in our social services. And it demonstrates to us that people are reaching out to these services to help cover the costs of food, transportation, cleaning supplies, and many for emergency needs. In addition, we've launched the Emergency Childcare to also support our essential workers so that they can continue to do what they need to do within the community. I'd also like to talk about, the next slide will update you on some of the community supports and services that we've been asking. New partnerships, funding, collaboration have been built to address those with the most immediate needs. Mayor Watson highlighted many of the opportunities and initiatives that have been seized within this community and being are led by many of our community partners and agencies. The rural is the most important, critical aspect for us right now, trying to reach out and understand what those unique needs are. We will be launching a postcard campaign with the Red Cross, starting in West Carlton, to start to reach out and target specific areas that we know may not have direct access to services and we think may have specific needs. In addition, our priority is addressing the needs of our housing and homelessness community. And I would be remiss if I did not thank, at the outset, those who are working day in and day out in our shelter system and our family shelter system to support those in our community. The Shepherds of Good Hope, the Salvation Army, the Missions, Corner Store, and Youth Services Bureau, every day are providing services to those who have challenges to meet the needs that they need for social distancing. The city as well has had the opportunity to distribute $1.7 million to housing and through our partners for priority things such as food supplies, vouchers, staffing, security, and cleaning supplies. Their needs are immense, and their needs are critical. Our focus and our priorities have been addressing the unique needs for physical distancing and isolation in those shelters. We've added an additional 78 hotel rooms, which the mayor mentioned, to increase our capacity, but we're not stopping there. We realize that we require an additional 200 beds to be able to move individuals out of our existing shelter capacity so that we can protect our most vulnerable. And our plan to do that currently is we're looking at identified city facilities, universities, hotel rooms, and any other option that we can see before us to ensure that that can happen. We're expanding our isolation capacity both for our singles and our families in those cases where people are being confirmed to have COVID-19. And we'll continue to provide ongoing support to those in our rooming houses to identify the need and a strategy to be able to continue to support them and support the workers that support them. But there are many emerging needs and gaps that come daily. The slides highlight some of them that have been mentioned by Dr. Vera Etches. Personal protective equipment, food bank reserves, continued transportation, technology, and mental health crisis support are all on the horizon for us and the Human Services Support and the Human Needs Task Force to address. The next step for us is to continue to address these needs and work with the funds that have been provided through the federal and provincial governments to look at the direct needs of individuals and community agencies and municipalities. These funds and programs are changing daily, and we are looking at where all the programs and the financial investments are being made, and prudently targeting city funding and the funding that we receive through the Social Service Relief Fund to address those priorities most urgently identified through the Human Needs Task Force. Our first priority will be investing in social distancing and physical distancing and isolation of those at-risk populations. We will be mindful of the long-term nature of this crisis, but chart a path forward that also anticipates longer-term needs and the uncertainty that this virus may bring upon our community. We know we must take a phased approach, we must understand the needs of both our diverse communities, and we know that we must continue to have conversations with the federal and provincial government as this situation evolves. To date, the city has also dispersed $88,000 of additional money to the reaching homes in order to address those urgent needs. So in closing, I would like to thank those individuals who are working every day on the front lines in our direct services and in our community agencies, and to the participants to the Human Needs Task Force. I am inspired daily by their generosity, commitment, and dedication to those in our community. I would like to specifically mention Ottawa Public Health, who has been with us as a direct partner to make sure those most vulnerable are taken care of. We are working together to help and make sure that those that are isolated, most vulnerable, and those for the first time in their life who may be experiencing financial hardship or loss of business or loss of income, to help them address the stress that comes with this emergency situation in very uncertain times, and to make sure that our processes and our systems and our methods do not add additional stress to any of those individuals. Thank you very much for the opportunity, and we'll continue to provide you regular updates as the situation unfolds.
Great, thank you. Wendy Stephenson, our City Treasurer and CFO, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and good morning, councillors. I'm going to provide an update and outline our projected financial impact in terms of what's happening with COVID-19. what's happening with COVID-19. I'm going to ask you to flip to the next slide, please. So looking at our financial review mandate, over the past week, finance has been working with departments to estimate the financial impact of the COVID-19 pandemic on the city's overall budget. A budget pressure is created whenever there is a reduction in budget of revenue or an increase in our budgeted costs. Some of the impacts of the pandemic, such as the reduction in the transit ridership or the closure of our recreational facilities, and the increase in our frontline services and market volatility, have created a budget pressure and in some case, some offsetting savings. Staff are developing estimates and projections of budget pressures and savings based on three scenarios. The first scenario is if the pandemic continues until the end of June, and that's a three-month scenario. The second scenario is if the pandemic continues until September, and that's a six-month duration. The third scenario is if the pandemic continues until the end of the year, which is a nine-month duration. These projections are then used to calculate our overall budget impacts that we expect under each of the scenarios and the expected cash flow if the pandemic continues for three, six, or nine months. The city's liquidity and its investments are strong, but they can only sustain us for so long, and any budget deficit draws down on our cash reserves. And our cash reserves are intended to help with our year-over-year fluctuations, but a reduction in one year must be replenished in future years to maintain the city's liquidity, financial sustainability, and strong credit rating. The Financial Review Task Force is working on strategies that will be described later to minimize the significant budget pressure created by this pandemic in the current year. Next slide, please. This slide provides an overview of the revenue reduction estimates based on the three scenarios that I've described earlier, so basically a three-month duration, a six-month duration, and a nine-month duration. Our departmental estimate projections show $102 million revenue shortfall by the end of June, and an additional shortfall of approximately $85 million if the pandemic continues until September, and again, another $86 million if it continues until December, which is a total revenue deficit of approximately $273 million. Transit has the most significant impact on our revenue shortfall. This projection is the worst-case scenario, and we have assumed that there'll be no fares that are collected starting in April. Even if we assume the current low level of ridership, approximately 10% or 15% of the shortfall just for transit, the revenue shortfall is approximately $130 million for the year. Recreation culture and facility services revenue shortfalls are based on an assumption that the facilities remain closed during the pandemic. We've also looked at emergency and protective services and see reductions in by-lock ticketing, parking, and permit revenues of approximately 50% for each of the scenarios. The finance reduction in revenues is primarily due to an estimate or an estimated 50% reduction in our penalty revenues, our deferral of taxes, our lower interest rates, and reduced investment returns due to lower market returns and declining cash reserves. In public works and environmental services, we're projecting 80% reductions in the on-and-off street parking, the tipping fee reductions due to the closure of the trail road facility, and some impacts to our water revenues, partially and primarily due to the declining industrial, commercial, and institutional sectors. There's also roughly a $2.8 million revenue reduction in the first three months for police, public health, and Ottawa Public Library for a combined estimate of approximately $6.5 million to end of year for reduced services, closures, and lost funding and revenues. On average, we're losing approximately $1 million of revenue per day or $7 million per week. We're well-connected with our municipal counterparts across the country who are also seeing and having similar revenue reductions as a result of the pandemic. Next slide, please. There are non-controllable and controllable drivers associated with our revenue reduction. The most significant budget pressure is on the revenue side, and it's primarily due to largely non-controllable drivers, and this is the economic contraction and the reduced business activity that's happening in our city. We also have mandated closures of services that would have generated revenue for the city, such as recreational facilities or libraries. And the financial markets have been quite volatile of late. Investment returns have declined, and the city's ability to issue debt and other forms of financing has been limited. There are some controllable drivers with respect to revenue reductions, and these are our decisions to stop or reduce services that have user fees. Our decision to reduce or suspend fees or services, such as lifting the on-street parking restrictions and rent abatement for tenants who are in closed city facilities, and also our decision to defer property tax payments, water utility bills due dates, and impact on our cash flows as the city's financial investment returns. Next slide, please. The Financial Review Task Force has started to identify impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic on our operating costs, and this slide shows the preliminary results, but a full assessment is currently underway. So this slide provides only an example of some of the cost impacts and some of the savings that we will see. In some cases, there are reductions in costs due to the reductions in service, such as transit services or facility closures, such as recreational services and public libraries. For transit, for example, there will be a reduction in fuel costs and some overtime compensation costs due to the reduction in transit services moving to the modified schedule. For recreational services, there'll be a reduction in compensation, utilities, materials, and supplies that are no longer required due to the closures. Other areas will see costs due to address some of the operational impacts of the pandemic, such as our long-term care staff required to cover the 24-by-7 operations and increased needs, increased solid waste operating costs for the in-house group due to higher residential tonnage, and additional IT software and hardware requirements for staff who are teleworking, and increased frontline resources in the emergency and productive services area. I reiterate that this is not, and this slide does not present all of the savings. It's not inclusive in terms of the costs associated with the pandemic. It speaks only to some of the expenditure reductions and increases, and this work will continue over the next couple of weeks while we work out a broader picture of the overall impact. Next slide, please. The budget pressure caused by the significant revenue shortfalls will need to be addressed as much as possible in the current budget year. Otherwise, the shortfall will need to be recovered from future taxpayers for years to come. The Financial Task Force is exploring various strategies to address the shortfall, including the announcements that our city manager made on Monday with respect to our part-time and casual staff who are now on declared emergency leave and staff impacted by service reductions and closures, reducing or eliminating discretionary spending wherever possible, pausing nonessential staffing positions that are currently vacant, identifying capital projects that can be closed and the remaining funds are returned to source, drawing down on our operational and capital reserves with the intent to replenish these reserves over time, looking at monetization of the city's assets, such as leasing or sale of land or buildings for some of our investments, and approaching senior levels of government for funding or grants to cover additional costs or backstop reductions in revenue and accelerating infrastructure funding, or an increase in gas tax funding to stimulate our economy post-pandemic. We're also looking at requesting legislative changes that provide municipalities with greater financial flexibility and additional sources of revenue. We will need to implement several of these financial strategies and not just one, and all of the departments are working together with the support of our federal and provincial partners to address the significant financial challenge that we face. Next slide, please. So some funding has been approved by both the federal and the provincial governments to help municipalities cover the cost of the COVID-19 pandemic, and my colleague Donna spoke about some of these things earlier. However, much of the funding is to be distributed to the agencies delivering the services in most of the impacted sectors. The federal government has announced $1.65 million in new funding for 2019 and 2020 through the Reaching Home Program to help Ottawa's homelessness sector covering the pandemic-related expenses. The city has allocated this $1.65 million to 50 agencies to cover the extraordinary expenses related to COVID-19 over the next six to eight weeks, including funding for additional staffing, cleaning supplies, food, transportation, and IT equipment. The city has been notified that our 2020 and 2021 funding allocation will be $4.8 million under Canada's COVID-19 Economic Response Plan to support people experiencing and at risk of homelessness. Housing Services is going to work with the Housing and Homelessness Service Sector to allocate this funding and to address the ongoing and emerging needs of the sector in responding to the COVID-19 pandemic. Next slide, please. The province has announced several programs to cover the cost of the pandemic in Ontario, but has not yet indicated how much will be allocated to each municipality. They've made announcements of a $160 million program to support COVID-19 for monitoring, surveillance, and testing, and also virtual care and telehealth. Additionally, they've announced $243 million in funding for long-term care to provide additional capacity of screening and staff supplies and equipment to tackle COVID-19. With that program, there is a $50 million province-wide, one-time emergency funding, and the city will be receiving $300,000 to prevent and contain the spread of COVID-19 in the city's long-term care homes. $13.2 million of additional funding was approved for the CHPI program under the Social Services Relief Fund for households at risk of homelessness due to COVID-19. The province has postponed the planned property tax assessment for 2021, allowing for municipal governments to focus on critical health initiatives and manage our response to COVID-19. So that pushes the planned assessment out for one additional year. And the province has also helped alleviate some of the cash flow pressures by deferring our June and September education tax payments by three months. This extends approximately $100 million in cash flow for each remittance for a further 90 days. Next slide, please. Going to talk a little bit about our estimated cash flows over the next nine months, and the city has always been in a strong cash position. Both our credit rating agencies, Standard &amp; Poor's and Moody's cite the city as having high liquidity levels, and it's a key factor in our strong credit rating. At the end of 2019, our cash and investments totaled $1.6 billion, and as of March 31st, the total had remained at $1.6 billion, particularly because we received payments in March for our interim tax bill. We typically maintain between $400 and $600 million in cash for ongoing operating needs and an additional $1 billion in long-term investments, which represent our endowment fund, our development charge reserves, and our capital reserves. As of March 31st, we are holding more in cash, and mainly that's due to the market in terms of its volatility and our ability to reinvest. In terms of our overall cash flow projections due to the pandemic, in the first two scenarios where the pandemic continues for the next three and six months, our total cash investments are expected to drop to approximately $1.2 billion, assuming we have sufficient time for the markets to recover in the current year to issue our budgeted debt of $350 million to keep us at a level of $1.2 billion. In our worst-case scenario, there's no market recovery by the end of the year, and the revenues continue to decline until the end of the year, and our total cash and investments drop to approximately $600 million. We are not in a negative cash position, but this situation would be financially unsustainable without support from other levels of government and a significant reduction in our operating costs and capital expenditures. In terms of the impact on our operating capital reserves, these projected deficits will reduce those reserves significantly, but most will remain positive. Our transit reserves, however, will be in a deficit position by year-end in all of this scenario. Next slide, please. In summary, the city has sufficient cash flow to the end of the year, but it's not sustainable without additional funding support and reductions in our spending. The most significant impact is on our city revenue, and finance staff are working with departments to close this gap by decreasing expenditures and to pause or stop work wherever possible. This is an unprecedented situation and one that the city has never seen or been in before. All municipalities across Canada are experiencing similar financial pressures, notably the reduction in transit revenues. The city will need some assistance from other levels of government to help bridge the gap, and we are working to ensure that the city's spending is in line with our new reality. This is the end of the financial update, and I'll pass it back to the city manager for any concluding remarks.
Mr. Mayor, I'm in your hands because I understand Councillor Chantiri is going to give an update on the flood, but we've concluded the staff presentation.
Okay, thank you. And our final presentation, Councillor El Shantiri on flood preparations. Councillor, and then we'll get to questions and comments.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and colleagues. Mr. Mayor, we're working closely with staff and specifically Leila Gibbons, the commander of the Frichette 2020, and Tony DiMonte. I have visited the site yesterday just to say thank you to our staff. They are followed the Ottawa Public Health. The separation is making it obviously a little bit more challenging, but nevertheless, our staff are doing a great job. We are preparing some sandbags now in the preparation. We are preparing now not for the extreme flood we've seen 2017 and 2019. Our staff is still monitoring the river with all the agency Conservation Authority or the Ottawa River Control Board, but right now we are preparing for what we call the normal floods in the low-line area. So some of those sandbags, our staff preparing in a bundle of 70 bags per bundle could be delivered, or they can start delivering as early as the weekend. So we are monitoring the situation. Our senior management team doing a great job keeping me updated, and I'm doing the best I can to keep my colleagues up to date, especially Councillor DeRusse and Councillor Kavanaugh. So on your behalf, I want to say thanks to the senior management team and to all the city staff because they came in from all different departments to help out because the challenge, you can't have too many people at one time in one area. So we are doing the, obviously, the physical distance, and we're doing what we can. Subject to any question, that's what we have right now, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Merci beaucoup, Councillor Shantiri.
Thank you, Councillor El Shantiri.
Steve, and Donna, and Vera, and Eli, and Wendy, I think we can all be very proud of the professionalism and the competence that these public servants are bringing to our residents in a very difficult time. And so we'll go for questions and comments on COVID-19 and flooding and financing, and if you don't wish to offer a comment or something has already been said, you can just simply say pass. So we'll go by the random sheet. The first speaker is Councillor DeRusse, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm good.
Sorry, was that pass?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, councillor. Councillor Moffett?
Pass.
Okay, thank you. Councillor, I think you might have muted on.
Yes, no, the update was excellent, thank you, no comment.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
My question to Dr.
My question to Dr. Vera, first of all, thank you for everything you're doing. But the question, we talk about the paramedicine in the rural area. Have those paramedics been working together between EMS and public health to visit some of those vulnerable people who cannot make the drive to do the testing outside their area?
The leadership for the response related to healthcare is now under the Ottawa Hospital and what we're calling the Champlain COVID-19 Response Table, which has all of the hospital CEOs and Tony Demonte and myself coordinating the approach. And so that is part of the conversation that the table is having, is how to best use that service, and it is to reach people who may be isolated or have difficulty accessing other services. I'm not sure if Mr. Anthony Demonte wants to say anything else about that right now.
Counselor, the Dr. Etches has given a very good update, so we're currently looking at the community paramedicine, as Dr. Etches indicated, is already doing the long term. We're now looking at the isolated patients in the rural, and that's something that we're going to see if we can evolve into.
Mr. Mayor, my other question is to Donna Gray about the human task reaching out to our area. I'm working with her staff, but when do we see some of those material delivered to the community, Donna?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're expecting that that would start next week.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's all my question.
Thanks, Counselor. Counselor Egli, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a quick question for Wendy Stephenson and perhaps Mr. Cantalac. We're entering into our major construction season. We have quite a number of projects slated to go. I have a motion actually about one of them a little bit later in the meeting. But my question is this, is there, is there any possibility of taking some of that money set aside for projects and redeploying it in areas where we're seeing or we think we're going to see deficits? Or is the virtue of the funding for those projects such that, under current legislation and contribution agreements to other levels of government, that we, even if we did cancel those projects, we can't suddenly take it and divert it to transit, for example, to hold off the deficit there? Or do we have options in that regard?
Wendy, do you want to start?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the question, Counselor Egli. First, I just want to reiterate that we're going to start looking at where we can save money in terms of, I'm going to say, is the easiest for us to achieve those savings. So in terms of capital, our first look is at the projects that are slated to close, so where we have actually completed that work. And we'll take any monies that are left over to apply to the budgetary gap. From there, we would look at other projects, but we need to be very mindful of the agreements that we have in place with other levels of government who have provided us funding for those projects to ensure that we're not breaching any of the agreements that we have with them. And what I would suggest is we'd look at perhaps possibly smaller projects, but not the larger ones. And Steve, I'll just ask if you have any further comments to add to that.
I can say, Mr. Mayor, that Mr. Willis and his team at Infrastructure are reviewing all the capital projects, because some we haven't let. There are obviously financing parameters and conditions on many of the projects, but we have started a, they have a task team going reviewing all capital projects with respect to whether they should go or not, and the timing of them or even be deferred. And that is something we're going to be assessing over the next couple of weeks, bringing it back to senior leadership team and rolling that into our financial update through our CFO.
Thank you for that. Just a very, very quick follow-up. Wendy, you had indicated that I think there were funds established by other levels of government, such as the provincial government, but it wasn't clear at this point what share of those funds Ottawa would be getting. Do we have a timeline on when we may get more specifics on how much money will be flowing to Ottawa?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. No, we don't have any timelines as of yet. We will have to wait for either the province or the federal government to make those firmer announcements in terms of the allocations to the municipalities, and I will provide updates to council as those are received.
Thanks very much.
Thanks, Counselor. Counselor Hubley, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have just a couple of questions, if I may. First off to Wendy, are we looking at, like currently under the legislation, we can't, municipalities can't carry forward a deficit, are we in discussions with the province to have that adjusted if we have to carry forward?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We are looking at all of the legislated changes that we would require in terms of dealing with a deficit. That is one of the possibilities, but we are also looking at changes whereby we could have other revenue sources or alternatives to help us fill this gap.
Okay, thank you. Now, my next question would be for Dr. Etches. In your slide presentation, one of the slides, and I'm sorry, I don't see slide numbers here, but it's projected ICU hospitalizations, and it shows a peak happening in between July and August. And I'm just wondering, do we have ICU capacity for that peak?
So I'm looking at the slide eight, and I want to emphasize that models are less reliable the further out you go. And so the slide before it shows data where we're projecting till the end of April, and absolutely, I am told with the healthcare partners who are looking at this, that there is confidence that we have the capacity we need through the end of April. But it is a moving target, and the point of the slide that you're looking at is that our actions really will make a difference in terms of what happens into the future. And so we do not have capacity for that blue, you know, peak. That is, that would not be something we could manage. And so the physical distancing is required until the hospital can build more capacity or we can take other approaches that are, you know, like testing everybody or being able to follow up with people in a different way that we just don't have the tools to do right now. And so, yeah, if the physical distancing continues, then we should not see that challenge. But again, it's harder to predict going further out like that.
Understood, but the whole purpose of doing these projections is to red flag areas where we may need to build capacity or have issues. I understand you can't reach the blue curve, but what about the orange curve? That even looks like it could be past our capacity or certainly at the top of our capacity.
Yes, I would say that we want to stay around the green territory as much as possible.
Of course.
Yeah, and this is something our healthcare partners, you know, with the leadership of the Ottawa Hospital are looking at these models, just for that very reason, to think about what capacity they need to build, and they're actively working on that.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Etches, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's all for me.
Thanks, Counselor Hubley. Counselor McKenna, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have just a couple of questions, both of them for Donna Gray. Donna, I just wanted to follow up on your presentation and the fact that we have, that you're working on establishing an extra 200 beds for isolation, and that's, that is really good news and something that the community at large will be very happy to hear and understand. I just wondered, Donna, if, I mean, we're being asked by the public, we know that Toronto has acquired some empty hotels to be able to isolate people now who are in shelter and homeless or precariously housed, and, you know, looking at further establishing permanent supportive housing, you know, as we move forward out of this. And I just wonder if those conversations are happening with our federal partners, I know that they are in Toronto and other municipalities, and I just wonder if what you can share with us in terms of that planning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I said, the whole precarious, you know, housing situation of our homeless and our shelter system is our number-one priority. We have not had a COVID-19 confirmed case yet in our existing shelter system network, and we really do believe that that, with the guidance of public health, is an area we really need to focus our most urgent efforts. So we have been looking at every possible opportunity, including hotels that are opening and aren't yet open, hotels that are closing, existing hotels, existing infrastructure in our universities, that's where we're also looking as well for isolation centers. Our priorities are social distancing and our shelters immediately and social housing or physical isolation immediately to be able to deal with the containment of the virus. But we're not losing our eye in the larger-term vision and direction in terms of long-term housing for individuals and people. The current funding that we actually have received from the federal and provincial government is really targeted for these first emergency needs that I spoke about. It's not to be used for capital infrastructure at this point in time, and so that is our primary focus. So all those options are on the table and being looked at, with the priority focusing those two areas of concern.
Oh, thank you for that. So I just, I just want to clarify then, that the Reaching Home money, the 1.65 plus the 4.8 specifically for the COVID-19 response, that is money to be used in that, on homelessness, so the physical isolating without any capital, is that correct?
That is correct, but that's on top of our existing Reaching Home allocation.
Yes, yes. And then the, so I am happy to hear that there is, you know, an eye on long-term housing, obviously, I expect that, I know that that's something that, that your team is always thinking about and looking forward to, and I just think that, you know, there could almost be an opportunity in this horrible crisis to actually move forward and start to actually house people who are experiencing homelessness. So thank you for that, and I'm sure more to come. And just one other question on the CHIPI money, the Community Homelessness Prevention Money, that additional $13.2 million, would that be allocated as a housing allowance for individuals and families who are at risk of homelessness? Is that the, is that what that is used for?
The $13.3 million that we have allocated in the Social Services Relief Fund, although it's funding through the CHIPI program, it has a broader definition and broader breadth in terms of the ability and the flexibility that it gets used for in responding to the COVID-19 situation in our local community. So we are looking at the entire needs of the community, including prioritizing, like I said, our emergency healthcare solution, housing-related supports, homelessness prevention, all of those items. We will be looking at prioritizing those, as well as the broader community response through the Human Needs Task Force, and we'll be allocating that based on the needs.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I just wanted to point out that, you know, we did have had some conversations with Minister McKenna, and it was clear from our conversations with her, and I'm sure you've had them as well, that she certainly would entertain and support any type of recommendations or for acquisition of hotels for long-term, long-term housing needs. So thank you for the work you're doing and keep well. Thanks.
Great, thank you, Counselor. We're always open to money from other levels of government, so we'll keep our eyes open for that, appreciate it. Counselor, Conseil Cloutier, s'il vous plaît?
Merci, Monsieur Mayor, no, just.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great information today. I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you, merci. Counselor Suds, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no questions, but certainly heartfelt thanks for all the amazing work happening on behalf of staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Lulov, please.
No questions, Mr. Mayor, just want to thank our leadership staff for ensuring that our employees still have access to their EAP during this time. It's terribly difficult for people and their mental health, so I think that our city showed a leader, showed leadership in that, so thank you all, Mayor.
And Counselor Lulov, thank you for your work on the same issue with the Ottawa Public Library. Counselor Brockington, please.
Thank you, Your Worship, a good morning to everyone. To the city manager, when the provincial state of emergency is lifted, can you explain the discussions that will happen locally about when local restrictions will be lifted? What is the thinking process that goes into those types of decisions?
Well, Mr. Mayor, we've started those discussions now. We are actively engaged in discussing how would a return to some kind of normal be rolled out, starting with city services and starting with our facilities, et cetera. I can tell you that the first priority in our pillar is how do we protect our staff and residents from each other, like the grocery stores are doing and the pharmacies, et cetera. So we're thinking about, you know, right down to the detail, because that's what we're into, into, is it going to be protective glass between people at all of our counters, our recreation facilities, et cetera, as an example. Social distancing, I would imagine, you know, we'll take advice from Dr. Etches, but I would imagine just because the curve flattens, there's still going to have to be an emphasis on social distancing, so there's going to be discussion about what does that mean in terms of the volume of people we allow into our facilities at any one time or into our programs or into our services. We're working with the province, and I'm also working with major cities across Canada. We're discussing that rollout right now from an economic, a social, and a staffing perspective. We have a firm engaged that's working with, as I told you, with Vancouver, Edmonton, Calgary ourselves, Montreal, and Toronto, talking about, looking at detailed analysis and statistics and data on every sector in our economy, where we have to target our efforts, where do we need help with other levels of government. So we're developing strategies over the next, over the next month that we're going to be able to bring back to council, the paints of picture of all the considerations we're taking to roll back out, and how do we get the city back on foot. We all have come to the conclusion so far that it's not going to be a light switch approach where everything just turns on and everything opens up fully to the public. I think it'll be a gradual, a gradual opening and a measured one, and we'll be taking our guidance, as I said, from, obviously, the province in terms of, I'm sure they're going to be giving some guidance with respect to, you know, any lifting of the emergency and what does that mean post-emergency declaration? And it will also be, Dr. Etches will also have a big role in terms of how do we live in a, in a social distancing world where we're still trying to get in, or a physical distancing world where we're still trying to implement services. So the Emergency Operations Control Group is actively looking at that, we have task teams on that, and we'll be bringing something back to council as we evolve this issue.
Thank you. I really do appreciate that detail. Obviously, we are going to lift restrictions before the virus is completely eradicated, but it's that, that balance between protecting the public and trying to get back to quote-unquote "normal." Since I have you, I'll just continue my questions with you, the city manager. You've identified some temporary layoffs for seasonal and part-time workers the other day, you mentioned them again today in your report with perks in rec and library. That saves about $2.6 million a month. The treasurer's been clear, we need about $30 million. Are there any other staff that you're looking at for temporary layoffs?
No, we have a, we have another task team that is looking at redeployment and the rest of our staffing. The first order of business is our discretionary spending and all spending that now doesn't have to- have to happen because of the situation we're in and that we can make decisions on not to spend. We will be looking at all our vacant positions, obviously, in terms of, we put a hiring freeze on now, so we stopped hiring other than, than the discretion of the general managers because some of them need to redeploy. But before we hire, redeployment is the first option. So what we're analyzing right now, before I can say if there's further impact on staff, is what are the needs of the organization going to be with the understanding that our organization might have a reduced workforce to carry us through to the point where we get back to re-establishing services? And so we need to maximize the redeployment of existing staff before we start looking at letting any staff go, because we need to understand sort of the supply-demand side of services and staff. And, and then from there, we'll be making decisions on, on, you know, the, the number of staff we need, et cetera. I don't anticipate that we're going to be letting go any full-time staff, quite frankly. I think that as we progress through this, we're going to need, because some of the departments are taking actions where we're trying to keep a reserve bench and rotating staff out to keep them away from each other, especially in our critical areas, you know, the water, wastewater, emergency services, social services. We're taking great steps to make sure that the people in those departments and in other critical department areas, I haven't captured them all, are basically available to keep going. The worst case scenario for us is it sweeps through the organization and then our services can't be delivered or can't ramp up when the community most needs them. So that's a long answer to say that we are not contemplating that right now because we have not completed our assessment of what our needs are going to be going forward.
Fair enough. No, I appreciate that. And now just to Dr. Etches. Doctor, thank you for your presentation. I just want to go back to slide six. Slide six talks about projective cumulative cases in our city. And in mid to late April, your chart is estimating or predicting basically flattening of the curve and through May. Can you just talk to that, please? Is that what this means? Or are we predicting that the curve will be flattened within the next three to four weeks?
Thanks for the question. I, I wanted to try to clarify that this kind of modeling has a significant limitation in that it is based on our current laboratory confirmed tests. And so it is, it is limited because right now our testing strategy is limited as we have only so much capacity to do lab tests. That, that approach to testing is something that we're working, you know, collaboratively with the Champlain Health Regional Incident Command to, to, you know, assess, can we open that up and provide testing for more people in different priority categories? So we'll be updating our website with that information as, as we come to some conclusions about how to balance our testing capacity. But, so I would expect this curve to change as our testing capacity grows. But it, it does, you know, demonstrate based on the patterns to date that we, we aren't seeing a steep increase at this point.
The ICU hospitalization projections talk about what would happen if there was a 50%, 60%, 70% physical distancing rates. What, what is the physical distancing rate in Ottawa now? Where are we? Are we 80%? Are we 50%?
Uh, no, I, I think we are greater than 70% based on the polling data which was taken from a week ago. And I think the messaging has only, you know, been able to sink in further over the last week that people need to be doing their part to stay home and protect themselves and others. And so the poll data we have from a week ago says that 85% of respondents are working to stay two meters away from people as much as possible and limiting their outings for essential shopping, you know, only. These are, these are good, you know, proportions and it was a random sample. And so we can say that this data is representative of the population. And I want to thank everyone in Ottawa for doing their part because this is important.
Excellent. Mr. Mayor, I have a question that's very small in the grand scheme of things, but important. Hazardous waste depots, at least the first one, have been canceled. And I just want to ask staff, maybe the city manager, how are we, how is the city communicating to the public not to throw hazardous waste in the garbage and to keep it until the hazardous waste depot is reopened?
Mr. Mayor, may I ask Kevin Wiley, I believe is on the line, to take that question for the councillor Brockington? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are advertising out through Pimmer, asking people to keep their hazardous waste at home. And as this progresses, we're dealing with our, communicating with our contractors that actually do the depots on our behalf to see if we can make sure they're lined up to have a depot as soon as we're out of this situation.
Okay, thanks very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, councillor Brockington. Councillor Dudas, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a question for Wendy. You mentioned that, and you probably referred to at least one previously, but legislative changes that may provide the city with greater flexibility and that you'll be seeking that from the province. Can you provide a little bit more information about what you'd be seeking?
So we're looking at probably three different things. The first is really the transfer between restricted reserves or use of those. The second is our ability to budget for a deficit. And thirdly is around our ability to generate different or other revenues that we haven't been able to do to date. So those things are on the table. We're continuing to have conversations across the province with our municipal counterparts in terms of other things that we could put in front of the province for consideration. And one of the things that has been discussed, although not a formal ask that's been made to date, is just in terms of something that happens out in B.C., where the federal government or the province provides a backstop in terms of homeowner's and commercial properties to help pay their property taxes. So we're looking at all of the options just to see what might be available to us to help close the gap in terms of our deficit or assist with our cash flow.
In, in all the projections and the financial strategies that are before us, it doesn't mention the possibility of the impact on taxpayers and property taxes. It speaks a lot about revenue and fees for service. And I'm just wondering, and maybe it's too early to discuss this, but is there any indication of what the impact this could all mean on taxpayers' incoming budgets?
Mr. Mayor, I think it's too soon to comment on that. As, as we noted, both myself and the city manager, we want to look internally first in terms of savings that we can provide to offset these budgetary gaps and expenditures. And then to other levels of government in terms of grants or backstops first before we have to consider something like that.
Perfect, thank you. And I understand it is, it's so incredibly early in this situation. I do have a follow-up question possibly for whether Wendy or Steve in respect, the city manager, in respect to the construction projects and then potential infrastructure projects for the city. Obviously, we will have to determine priority and how we fund them, if we can fund them going forward. As you go through the process of identifying which ones need to be done and how that happens, how will that be communicated with council and, and residents so that we can mitigate expectations about what the city can deliver in the coming year or following years to come?
Mr. Mayor, may I ask Stephen Willis, General Manager of Planning Infrastructure and Economic Development, to take that question?
Mr. Mayor, just quickly recap what the treasurer had said earlier. In order to finalize the list, we have to look at the source of funds and if we're eligible to, to suspend or pause the work or defer it to next year based on the source of funds. Secondly, we need to look at the contract status, if the work has been tendered and if we are in a binding contract and what the implications would be and whether there's any financial penalties to us should we suspend or break those contracts. And then finally, when we have found a shortlist, which we need a couple more days to do, we will communicate through FedCo our revised list of projects. And we are working on preparing that as well. But there, there is still a great deal of work we need to do in order to finalize that list at this time.
Wonderful. That's all for me. And thank you all for doing such an incredible work under these trying circumstances.
Thank you, councillor Dudas. Councillor Tierney, please.
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, councillor. Councillor Shirelli?
My question deals with parks and recreation. Every year at spring, premium sports fields and other sports fields have to receive certain maintenance to make sure they're, they're ready for the soccer, football and baseball groups who use them. And what kind of assurance can we give them that when this is over and they return to playing, that the fields have received the maintenance that they're, they're going to require?
Mr. Mayor, may I ask Kevin and then Dan Shenye if there's a follow-up?
Mr. Mayor, good question. We are keeping our regular maintenance going even with our rotational staff. That's some of the things that we're focusing on so that when sports fields are ready to be opened, they're in good shape and ready to be played on.
Mr. Mayor, just to add to Kevin's, we have been through our allocations group in touch with all of the sports leagues that use our fields, first of all, to let them know that, that the June 30 closure is now in effect. And also to assure them that as we move through this and we get a better idea of the return to normal, when they can expect to get back on fields and how we will do the rescheduling when the time comes for that.
All right. And in some cases, our fields are co-maintained by us and say a school board or a sports group. Is that still going on?
Mr. Mayor, we have been in touch with the school board. They have essentially adopted the same approach that we have, both in terms of maintenance as well as keeping groups off of their field. In fact, we exchanged signs as, as this was beginning so that our message would align and be the same for, for the user groups.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Kavanaugh, please. Councillor, maybe remove mute. Councillor Kavanaugh, are you there? Okay, maybe we'll, we'll just, she might have been dropped, so we'll go to councillor Gower, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to, for all the updates from everyone this morning. I had a question about the decision-making on some of the tough financial issues that we're facing right now. Obviously, we're in an emergency situation and the city needs to act quickly and make some very difficult decisions in this area. But at the same time, there's also a need to keep council informed and engaged since we engage with the public and ultimately are accountable to the public. So it's a question for either a city manager or treasurer, just in broad strokes, how should council expect to be consulted and informed going forward in the next weeks and the next months as these decisions are being made?
Mr. Mayor, the, you know, as, it's, it's a great question. We're in this emergency state. However, the implications of financial decisions impact all city services and programs ultimately. And our view is that, you know, we're only four weeks in. We're really turning our heads to the financial implications now. Wendy and her team are doing a remarkable job, digging deep and working with the general management departments. And I would imagine, you know, at the, at the, at the will of the mayor, that we will be bringing updates on where we are in our financial to council, through FedCo, if FedCo meets, but certainly ultimately to council, to advise council on the steps that are being taken, what the situation is, and, and looking forward in terms of the solutions becoming evident, communicate with council and ensure that they're informed about what's happening. And also council has a role, even despite the emergency, I think, in some sense of the, when we make these recommendations, these reviews, there may be issues that, that, and I don't know what they are yet because we're not there yet, where we have to have FedCo and council look at these matters and, and decide on them.
Okay, thank you. And a question for Dr. Etches. In terms, I'm not looking for timelines because I know that's impossible at this point. Are there signals that public health officials are looking for that would say it's time to start looking at a graduated return to some kind of normal? Are there data points or are there conditions that you're looking to see in place before you can even start thinking about that?
Well, it's never too, too early to start thinking about how do we get out of the physical distancing or ease up on it because we know it's causing harm. So we are doing that thinking. The kinds of things we need to have in place are some assurances that our healthcare system can handle a rise in cases again if, if we ease up on physical distancing. We expect to see a rise in cases because most of the population is not yet immune or immunity might not be long-lasting. The other thing we need to, to make sure is that we have the capacity to find cases. So we really need more laboratory capacity for testing that we need to strengthen. So the, the, the data that I'm, I'm motioning in looking at, sorry, is, is not that the laboratory confirmed test, which is.
Sorry, doctor, just, just a moment. I think someone's not on mute. If we can just ask whoever is making the noise to go on mute, please. Okay, Dr. Etches?
So the, the data that I think is, is a stronger indicator of actually a decrease in, in the infection in our community would be looking at hospitalizations and deaths because those are, you know, outcomes that are very serious, but they're, they're likely robust in terms of people aren't going to miss being hospitalized if they have a serious infection. And the challenge is those hospitalization numbers come in probably about three weeks later than when someone's infected. And so those are the numbers that I, I want to be looking at in terms of following what's happening and, and then following further, you know, do we see a sustained decrease in hospitalizations over a two-week period, which is the, the incubation period for the infections? I, I think that would be a sign where, where we're really making progress.
And one more question for you, Dr. Etches. The data that you shared from the survey on slide 13 is very interesting. I was wondering if, if yourself and Ottawa Public Health have seen any, any activities or behavior that residents could improve on? Is there any message that you want to give to residents that here's where you could do better or do more on physical distancing that would, that would have an impact?
I, I really want to thank people for what they're doing now and the majority of people that seem to have gotten the message that you want to limit your trips outside of your home for essential purposes, which are buying groceries, getting, you know, medication and, and physical activity. Where I think there's been a little bit more challenge getting the message through is what does that physical activity include? Like can you, can you go into a park and, and hang out in a park? And so I really want people to understand why we're saying the parks are only for walking through, not using the play structures, not using the benches, because, you know, people could be infected when they don't know it. They could be contaminating play structures, park benches and, and not even knowing it. So we need to assume that, you know, and each do our part, that we just need to, to keep moving and, and not touch the things that are park infrastructure. And that's the best way to get physical activity.
Okay, thanks, everyone.
Thank you, councillor Gower. Councillor King, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'd like to really congratulate the senior leadership team, including Public Health, for all the work that they're doing in these difficult times. I had two questions. One primarily for Dr. times. I had two questions. One primarily for Dr. Etches, and it's a follow-up to a question that I asked at the last special council meeting, as well as a follow-up, I suppose, to questions that were posed by Counselors Hubley and Barkington. I know at the last council meeting you had noted that intensive care unit capacity had increased by 300% at that time. Based on these new projected models that you've presented to us, how fast will it take hospitals to be able to ramp up ICU capacity?
The hospitals across the Champlain region are working very hard on this, on an ongoing basis. What they have done is actually increased the beds and the bed capacity and then are also planning for surge and how would they continue to increase capacity if they needed to. And so it's a collective effort. You know, it's about making use of the resources across the region in the best way possible. And so it's an ongoing piece of work where people would be, you know, projecting what's needed, making sure they can manage, making sure we continue to keep the worst case in mind so that we can be prepared.
So do we have any sense of that in quantitative terms, in terms of what a surge would look like in the capacity and how it would ramp up?
So I don't have specific numbers, but what I'm hearing and, you know, can confirm based on the data we see is that there is capacity at least through the end of April. And if we continue to have good physical distancing, that there is, you know, a sense that this is something we can manage. But we need to keep looking at the information at the national, provincial, and regional level. And, you know, it's a moving target, so we need to keep adjusting based on the data we see.
Thank you for that. And my second question is directed to both Dr. Etches and potentially Ms. Gray. I know that in jurisdictions south of us, racialized people have been disproportionately impacted by COVID-19. So I'm wondering if we can speak to the outreach efforts that are being made by Ottawa Public Health and the city in terms of outreach to vulnerable people, including Indigenous communities and people of color?
Vera, you going to go first or not?
Sorry, I was going to let Donna take the lead as human needs, but this is a priority at the planning tables that I am part of. People are talking about prioritizing populations who have more barriers to health and healthcare. Indigenous health is definitely a priority. And we have leaders in the community here in Ottawa in providing Indigenous health services. So they are looped in and part of the Champlain healthcare planning.
Donna?
There's a mute button, Donna.
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That has been a significant piece of the Human Needs Task Force. There are recognition that that could be a potential area of focus for that. And thank you, Counselor, for bringing that to our attention as well. And as part of the Human Needs Task Force, we've expanded the membership to ensure that we have our Indigenous partners around that table representing the Aboriginal Coalition of Service Providers in the community. In addition, we've also expanded our outreach to OCSO, Ottawa Carlton Immigrant Serving Organization, as well as the OLUPs groups, and have used them as a vehicle to help us both reach our immigrant and racialized populations. And the team, as they're doing the planning and they're doing the needs analysis assessment, is also looking at both a gender and a gender equity lens and a diversity lens as well to ensure that we have a full representation of all those needs. And when we're looking at the allocation of resources, that is reflective of the needs as well.
That's excellent. I really appreciate that. I know over the last couple of weeks as this pandemic has been ongoing, there has been a bit of misinformation and seemingly even disinformation that has been floating around the Black community. So I'm going to work, my office is going to work in conjunction with Public Health to ensure that we correct that and that we get quality culturally sensitive material and information out to multiple communities in Ottawa. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I believe Counselor Kavanaugh is back on the line. Counselor?
Yes, thank you. I don't know what happened. My phone just didn't cooperate. Can you hear me now?
Yep, perfect.
Okay, thank you. I want to thank everyone for their presentations and all the work they're doing and all their leadership. It's a big job, but we've never seen this before, and I appreciate their leadership. In terms of public health, I want to give a shout-out to Vera, of course, and all the work. And I just want to ask, because I get asked by the community, will we be expecting any further measures? One of the latest things that came out was that we're going to not allow people to jog or go running in the daytime, which is something that happened in France. And personally, I don't think that's a problem. But I just wanted to check if we think we're going to go even further in terms of asking for more measures.
I think that is an important question, and it's important for the public to understand that it's really in all of our hands. If we do a good job with physical distancing now, with the ability to go out for some exercise, that can be, you know, that can be sufficient for us to manage. If we aren't able to sustain that, then the call for more restrictive measures could come. It is possible. When Premier Ford spoke about the projections, he says there could be future initiatives that need to be implemented if we aren't able to keep the number of infections manageable. So I am interested in a sustainable approach. It's why I continue to, you know, emphasize that people should go outside in a safe way. So making sure that you're not gathering with others, you're not visiting in parks, and you're making sure that you stay two meters away from others. Getting outside is critical for our mental health and our physical health, but we need to do it safely.
Thank you very much for that. I have a question for Donna regards to the gender lens. I want to give a special shout-out to Sosan Al-Rafeh, who prepared a piece regarding the COVID-19 and the disproportionate effect it has on women. And I just want to thank the team for acknowledging that. I just want to know if you have any comments further to that, on that piece?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And under the leadership of the mayor and yourself, Counselor Kavanaugh, the team has done a full assessment of the gender inequity and what that impact is on our local community. And we recognize the needs in these communities are going to be specifically important for us. And in order to do that, we really need to start to take a look at the information that we're collecting too about the response. So how do we start to have gender-sensitive data and diversity data around affected populations and what's the impact of those populations? And we're starting to do that as we look at the broader assessment of the long-term impact in these communities, many of which we think will be felt not in the initial, not only in the initial parts of the impact, but in the longer term for these communities. As well, we're also looking at what is the impact with our partner agencies, particularly the VAW sector and violence and violence against women and children. And Dr. Etches mentioned that in her speech around that being a specific component of a mental health strategy. But we're also looking at that as well in partnership with Ottawa Public Health in terms of working with that sector to ensure that their needs are met in this particular area. And we're also looking at making sure that all of the gaps get prioritized as we start to do the allocations moving forward. Because we do recognize that women, just because of the nature of the positions, we've started to take a look at the analysis as well of the positions and the types of work that either has a higher risk in this situation or is impacted by loss of employment. And again, that is specifically targeting women and young girls. And we'll be looking at longer-term strategies to address that, both in our social services, but also looking in the economic response as well.
I really appreciate that. I hate to say it, but I suspect that domestic violence will be an issue, and I'm very sorry to even have to state that. I had a specific question from residents in terms of someone who's pregnant and is particularly concerned. And I'm wondering if we can have any special information for those who are expecting or recently postpartum?
Yes, we don't have any, you know, evidence that that population is at greater risk for women who are pregnant, but infants are at higher risk of more severe outcomes. And so that is information we've been working to communicate through partners, through our Parenting in Ottawa website. But I'll take a look at those additional resources we could produce.
Yeah, we looked, we tried to find something, but it would be great to just clarify that information, just so that people can feel at ease. I know you're doing so many things, so appreciate that effort. Thank you. I have a question that is for the city manager related to some of the costs we're going through. Is it possible for the city to communicate to residents how they can help in terms of, for example, reducing waste to save costs? They're probably, since people are at home, perhaps we could make extra requests on people to be extra careful when they're recycling, et cetera, that could possibly save some money? Is there any plans for communicating tips like that?
That's a great idea, Mr. Mayor, and we'll feed that into the team with Kevin Wiley and our corporate communications. Thanks very much for that one.
I thank you. I think that people want to do their part, and they get that we're going through an extraordinary situation, and this will be an opportunity to do your bit. It's kind of like that whole victory thing during the war. People can help on the ground, and we can ask them. And by the way, I want to say my appreciation for Ottawa Public Health and support of Community Gardens because that was another effort in terms of people having local food, and it's another effort that we should support, of course, keeping physical distance. So thank you on that.
Sorry, Counselor, my understanding is that Community Gardens are closed under the provincial emergency order.
Correct.
But what we are planning to do is work with Community Gardens if they are able to open if that changes, to make sure it's done safely.
Yes, I appreciate that very, very much, for the reasons we just gave about staying local and having healthy health and food. So, and people being respectful of, of course, the conditions. In terms of the flood preparedness, I just want to say thank you to Eli and look forward to working with you on that. Hopefully, it won't be a big issue this year, but I appreciate the organization that is being put into the flood preparations. So thank you, Eli, on that.
Great. Anything else, Counselor?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Meehan, please.
Thank you very much, and good afternoon, everyone. I just have two quick questions. The first one is for, I guess, Steve Katalakis. Steve, just in terms of possible things that we can do to increase revenues, picking up on something that Wendy had said, we're looking at possible revenue streams. I know that you said it's too soon to look at staffing levels, but are you prepared to be looking at other service cuts and other program cuts perhaps before we take a look at going externally to increase our revenues in this unprecedented time?
We are looking at everything as we, it really depends, Mr. Mayor, on how this, you know, how the curve goes, as Dr. Etches said, and whether there's further restrictions. The course we're on right now is that we do have staff who are in service lines that aren't as utilized, obviously, in parks and rec and other areas, even though we have, you know, just announced about the 4,000 part-time employees who are on emergency leave. But we do have staff that we are talking about redeployment, has to be done with the union. We don't have the measures that the province gave to the hospitals and to public health and to long-term care homes to generally override our collective agreement. So they still stand. So we have to work with the union to redeploy staff between jobs and between unions. But we have a lot of pressure, for instance, in our community and social services area and in public health. We're in discussions with Dr. Etches about moving over possibly up to 1,000 staff to public health to be able to track and contact and do all the things they need to do on the phone, et cetera, behind the scenes. So until we make that assessment, I think it would be irresponsible for me to tell council that, yes, we could reduce our staffing because I want to make sure we have enough staffing to deal with the demand that our community is going to make of us. If we feel that that's not happening, then we'll reassess.
Well, not just staffing, but I guess programs. I'm just looking for some clarity. You know, are we going to do everything in our power, anything, everything possible to increase our revenues and to cut our spending before we go back to the taxpayer?
No, absolutely. I mean, I think that's what Wendy talked about. Right now, we're reviewing department, every department's budget. We're looking at every area where we can save money. Revenues are harder to generate, obviously, because if we're not running the program, we can't generate it. But we're looking hard at every one of our expenditures. And where the big money is, is in capital projects and works in progress, which is the term where, as she mentioned, where capital projects are completed and there's money sitting there that is sometimes utilized for other capital projects, bringing that back into the fold. We're looking at all our vacancies. We're looking at term positions. We're looking at our aspiring. We're looking at everything we can do to try and slow down the rate of spending and close the gap between what we projected deficit will be. I can assure you of that.
Thank you very much. That makes me feel better. And just one quick question for Dr. Etches. And Dr. Etches, thank you for everything you've been doing for us. It's been perfectly clear. I just appreciate that. But I've had specific requests from families who have autistic children, and they are, as you know, these kids are very reliant on routine. And what these families are experiencing right now is an awful lot of stress is unprecedented for some of these families. And I've had requests from some of these families. Is it possible? I know that there's a slippery slope if we say one family can use a play structure, but I'm looking for some direction here. What, where can we, we can put these families, where can we direct them so that they can relieve the pressure that they're facing right now? I know all families are facing pressure, but when you have a child who is so reliant on routine and they cannot go to their play structure anymore, and they don't understand, they don't, you can't tell them why they can't, they can't go to a park and walk through it, they need to go to the play structure. What can we do for these families? Can we make an allowance that maybe the kid can go on a play structure, but they clean it afterwards? I just need some help here on this one.
You're describing absolutely a challenging situation. I would say, no, we can't allow play structures to be used. It's a provincial emergency order that I support that we would like to explore alternatives, though. So I think if I can take this offline, we do have some connections with the developmental services sector, and maybe we can explore, you know, some of the need and the ideas that they might have to help families.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much. That's it for me.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Harder, please.
I don't have any questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Counselor. Counselor Menard?
Thanks very much, Mayor, and thanks to everyone for the update today. I also just wanted to thank our frontline staff. I know they've been doing a very good job. One of the things that has arisen for me is around personal protective equipment for those staff. Can you just clarify, are we providing personal protective equipment for our frontline staff, bus drivers? Hello?
Yes.
Can Sean speak to the phone, not to the speaker, because it can hardly hear him?
Okay, I'll try to speak up if that's better. I'm off of speakerphone and there was before, but hopefully this is better.
I think that's worse. Is there a problem with Counselor Menard's phone?
How is this?
That's better. Go ahead.
Is that better?
It is, yeah. It is, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So, I wanted to ask a question about frontline staff and whether they're receiving personal protective equipment or not.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask Dr. Etches to start, and then we can follow up. Vera, would you be able to provide some info on the guidelines for the use of PPE?
So, if you're talking about medical use, like our first responders, then they need to have medical-grade masks and other personal protective equipment, and that is something the city is ensuring. There is no recommendation at this point for a universal masking policy. However, what is being explored is for people who cannot keep a two-meter distance from others, you know, to be practicing that physical distancing as much as possible in the workplace. If that's not possible, then there is suggestion that there's an added layer of using a homemade mask. So, we are advising workplaces as public health about how to decrease infection prevention and control. The City of Ottawa is one workplace, and they have been following our guidance around screening everybody who comes into the workplace to make sure that nobody who is ill is in the workplace. That's a daily screening, and there are other measures that workplaces, including the city, have been putting in place. So, we'll continue to have those conversations.
Okay, that's helpful. I'm getting messages from some bus drivers or pair operators in particular who have concerns, and so I'll follow up, I guess, offline on that. But if I could get something back from maybe transit staff around our pair operators with PPE. In terms of the deficit or the reduction in revenues, I just wanted to confirm, it was Counselor Dudas that asked the question, but I just wanted to confirm, the city is asking for three pieces. One of those is around, to the province, one of those is around municipal deficits during this time. If that can just be confirmed, and maybe if that list could be sent to councillors, the letter or whatever it is that we're going to be sending to the province, it would be helpful to have that information so we can communicate to our representatives as well. Is that possible?
Steve, do you want me to take that question?
Yes, honey.
Mr. Mayor, we are developing what I'm going to call a long laundry list of possibilities. So, it's not available at this point in time. We're having conversations with our municipal counterparts across the country. The city manager talked about six municipalities who were working together in terms of our big city hub to also make additional last. And once I have that, I'm happy to share it with you, but at this point, it's just too soon.
Okay, thanks. It'd be very helpful to get that when things are finalized. In terms of childcare, a lot of parents have been contacting me with regard to payments at their childcare facilities, though they're not operating. And I think I've received confirmation now from Mr. Sabrin that we are indeed continuing to flow the funds to our childcare centers that we normally would fund, and that that issue from the provincial level has been addressed. I just want to get confirmation that we are continuing to do that, and if there's any looking at emergency funds for those childcare centers who will need to operate again at some point.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, yes, when the COVID outbreak occurred and childcare centers were required to close by the province, the province gave the city clear directions that we were to stabilize funding for the service providers and to ensure that we continue to flow funding to those service providers, even though those services are closed and not in operation. And we've already committed to those agencies, again, that we would continue to maintain their quarterly childcare and early years funding to the local service providers as per their contribution agreement from now until the end of the year. We're continuing, because this situation is evolving and with the implementation of the emergency childcare as well, we are continuing to have conversations both with the sector and the province around the long-term economic sustainability and viability of this sector in order to make those decisions in advance of when they are ready to reopen and re-operate.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Great, thanks, Counselor Menard. Counselor Leeper, please?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just want to say thank you to the senior staff who have been helping with all the other things that the city does, despite the current pandemic. A lot of different things have to continue moving forward, and thanks to senior staff and their staffs for being available to us to help keep the city moving ahead. One question, Dr. Etches, with respect to Slide 8, which is the ICU, I think I had heard in a previous media briefing that across the Lynn, we could surge to around 304 ICU beds over time. Is that roughly the ballpark that we're talking about?
I don't have a specific number today, because the capacity keeps growing. So, this is something, you know, the healthcare response table is looking at, and I don't have a specific number.
Okay, that's all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for those questions, and thank you again to our staff. So, we'll... Our next item is RTG, but we'll just go through the consent agenda, because some other members of staff are waiting on the line, and once we pass their item, if we do, then they can move on. The next item after that is city debenture. We have an amendment to that, so we'll come back to that. Next is budgets and special levies for BIAs and Spark Street Mall authority. Counselor Harder will virtually step away. Does anyone have any questions or comments on the budget and special levies for BIAs and Spark Street Mall authority? So, on the item before us, carried?
Carried.
Any dissents? Okay, thank you. Next is...
Mr. Mayor, on... Sorry, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Just a question on inquiries. I had some question as it relates to LRT winter and cold-conditioned testing. Could that be merged into the LRT discussion?
Sure, yeah, sure. Okay, so next is report on budget expenses pursuant to Ontario Regulation 28409.
Carried.
Any dissents?
No.
No dissents, okay. The next item is item number seven, disposition of 2019 tax and rate-supported operating surplus budget deficit. On the motion, carried?
Carried.
Any dissents? Okay. Item eight, 2020 tax ratios and other tax policies. This is the property class issue that we have to deal with every year. Any questions or comments?
Carried.
On the motion, carried?
Carried.
Any dissent? Any dissents? Okay. The next is planning, infrastructure, and economic development. Designate 300 Coventry Road as a municipal capital facility. My understanding is this has to be renewed every so often, because it expires at a certain date. Any questions or comments? So, on the motion, carried?
Carried.
Any dissents? Item number 10, sale of land, 1916 Maryvale Road and part of Slack Road to Patrick Butler in trust. I believe Counselor, is this Counselor Egli or Shirelli's ward?
It's Egli's ward.
Okay, so any questions or comments on item 10? Carried?
Carried.
Any dissents? Committee reports previously scheduled to rise to council on March 25. Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee Report Number 12. Item 11, official plan and zoning bylaw amendment for 6139 and 6143 Perth Street. Any questions or comments on the motion?
Carried.
Adoptee, any dissents? Okay. Item 12, rural economic development strategy and action plan. I believe Counselor Elchantiri wanted to offer a brief comment on this. Counselor?
Yes.
No, we hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm really pleased that the city economic development strategy clearly includes rural economic development as one of the foundation sectors to focus on. One rural economic strategy completed by staff is something we have needed for a long time. Includes five strategic priorities. One, supportive business environment. Two, a vibrant rural lifestyle. Three, a stringent rural tourism position. Four, innovation in agriculture and agri-food production. And five, advocating for rural priority. Over the next few years, staff will work to implement the plan, and will hear more about it as it rolls out. I want to thank the economic development team under Don Herwire, under the leadership of Steve Wallace, Don Herwire, and our consultant for their great work. In particular, I want to thank Shayla Doherty and Shep T. Also, I would like to, the rest of the team, they did a great job, Mr. Mayor, and I want to thank them on behalf of my colleague in the Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee.
Great, and thank you. Thank you for that. Does anyone have any questions or comments to the chair of the committee or staff? On the report as presented, carried?
Carried.
Adoptee, any dissents? Item 13, support of Bill 156, Security from Trespass and Protecting Food Safety Act 2020.
Yays and nays?
Sorry?
Yays and nays, please, Mayor.
Sorry, yays and nays?
Please.
Okay, but does anyone have any questions beforehand? Okay, so Caitlin, if we can call yays and nays, if you can get your mute buttons ready for item 13. This is, Council strongly supports Bill 156. Okay.
Counselor DeRouze?
Yes.
Counselor Moffett?
Yes.
Conseil Fleury? Counselor Elchantiri?
Yes.
Counselor Egli?
Yes.
Counselor Hubley?
Yes.
Counselor McKenney?
No.
Conseil Cloutier?
Oui.
Counselor Suds?
Yes.
Counselor Luloff?
Oui.
Counselor Brockington?
Yes.
Counselor Deans, Counselor Dudas?
Yes.
Counselor Tierney?
Yes.
Counselor Shirelli?
Yes.
Counselor Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Counselor Gower?
Yes.
Counselor King?
No.
Counselor Meehan?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Menard?
Nope.
Counselor Leeper?
No.
Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Eighteen yays, four nays.
Okay, thank you. Next is 6900 Bleaks Road, road extension construction. Counselor Moffett and Elchantiri have a motion. Do you wish me to read out the "Therefore, Be It Resolved"? Counselor Moffett?
Yeah, you can go ahead and do that, that's fine.
Okay. "Therefore, Be It Resolved, that report ACS 2020-OCC-ARA-0003 is amended by deleting the report recommendation and adding the staff recommendation as follows: That council delegate authority of the general manager planning infrastructure and economic development to enter into a development agreement with the owner of the property at 6900 Bleaks Road in respect of road improvements for the untraveled, unmaintained portion of Bleaks Road." Counselor Moffett, do you have any comments you'd like to add?
No, we spoke about that at committee. It's just a challenging situation where a permit was issued with a bit of a glaring error. So, we're trying to address that error between staff and the resident out on Bleaks Road, and this gives the authority to staff to have those discussions with the resident. It doesn't, you know, compromise any of our policies. It just gives the authority for staff to be able to work with the resident on a solution.
Okay, does anyone have any questions or comments? Carried?
Carried.
Any dissents? So, the report as amended, carried?
Carried.
Any dissents? Okay, thank you. Next item is Finance and Economic Development Committee Report Number 12A. Application for approval to expropriate lands, Montreal Road revitalization project phase two. Does anyone have any questions or comments on this? On the report, carried?
Carried.
Any dissents? Okay, next item is item 17, Brownfield Grant Program Application, 1545 Bank Street. There's one typo error. On the second line, it should be FES Development, not FED. And in the second recommendation, it should be FES.
It's Counselor Fleury here.
Yeah.
Just looking for a point of clarity. We had given direction in the past that any time a in-company number, in this case, 14337574, that is part of the approval report, we would also have a name of the sole proprietor of the organization.
Mr. Willis, do you have a comment on that?
Mr. Mayor, the direction was that we name the operating as, so 10773883 Canada Inc. is operating as FES Developments Inc., and Mr. Elias Aboud has been at public meetings representing as the proprietor of that company.
I believe, I think Counselor, this is in Counselor Cloutier's ward, and he supports it?
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Jean-Cécile here. Yes, I do support the application.
Okay, so on the motion as presented, carried? Thank you. Next is Finance and Economic Development Committee Report 13, LRT Stage Two Procurement Lessons Learned Scope. Next item is item seventeen Brownfield Grant Program Application fifteen forty-five Bank Street. A demand de titre de programme de subvention des friches industrielles un, cinq, quatre, cinq rue Banque. There's one typo error. On the second line, it should be F E S Development, not F E D. And in the second recommendation, it should be F E S.
It's councillor Fleury here.
Yep.
Just looking for a point of clarity, we had given direction in the past that anytime a inc. company number, in this case, one, four, three, three, seven, five, seven, four, that is part of the approval report, we would also have a name of the sole proprietor of the organization.
Mr. Willis, do you have a comment on that?
Mr. Mayor, the, the direction was that we name the, the operating as, so one, zero, seven, seven, three, eight, eight, three, Canada Inc. is operating as F E S Developments Inc. And Mr. Elias Aboud has been at public meetings representing as the proprietor of that company.
I believe, I think councillor, this is in councillor Cloutier's ward, and he supports it.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Jean-Cécile here. Yes, I do support the application.
Okay, so on the motion as presented, carried? Thank you. Next is Finance and Economic Development Committee Report thirteen. LRT Stage Two Procurement Lessons Learned Scope. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, it's councillor Fleury again.
Yes.
I did work with the clerk, and I did inform your, your team, and I believe you're comfortable with. I do have a direction to staff, I'll read it. I would ask that staff be directed to ensure that the consultant in this matter meet with any interested members of council prior to writing the lessons learned report in order to better understand the background from councillor's perspective and to provide additional context for this important report.
Yep, that's a, that's a great idea, councillor. Any objections to the direction? Okay, on the report.
Mr. Mayor?
Eli, yeah, councillor Elchantiri.
That's fine, Eli. Can we, can we hear from staff what does that mean in, in, in that time? It's a good idea, I get that, but I mean, if staff be able to accommodate this during this time?
Yeah, Mr. Manconi, are you comfortable with the direction from councillor Fleury?
Mr. Mayor, I would, I don't know if Will McDonald was on the call, but he should be responding to that. We have no concerns, but I, I will leave it up to Will to, to make a comment because he's spearheading that initiative.
Mr. Mayor, we will add that to the scope of work.
Okay, good. So, thank you councillor Fleury, merci conseil Fleury. On the report, carried?
Carried.
Any dissents? Bulk consent agenda, does anyone, I guess we'll have to do this maybe by the, the list. I'll just go through the list, and if anyone wants to lift anything off the bulk consent, just tell me. Councillor Darousse.
I'm good, no.
Councillor Moffett.
Hello.
Councillor Fle, conseil Fleury.
No.
Councillor Elchantiri.
No, sir.
Councillor Egli.
No.
Councillor Hubley.
No.
Councillor McKenney.
No.
Councillor Cloutier.
No.
Councillor Suds.
No.
Councillor Lulov.
No, thank you very much.
Councillor Brockington.
No, thank you.
Councillor Dudas.
No, thanks.
Councillor Tierney.
Nothing.
Councillor Shirelli.
No.
Councillor Kavanaugh.
No, thank you.
Councillor Gower.
No.
Councillor King.
No, thank you.
Councillor Meehan.
No, thank you.
Councillor Harder.
No, thank you.
Councillor Menard.
No, thanks.
Councillor Leeper.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so on the bulk consent agenda.
Okay.
Carried, any dissents?
Carried.
Any dissents? Okay, next item is item three. Rito Transit Group remediation plan per council motion twenty-nine-two of March ninth, twenty twenty. Verbal update from the city manager. Comprendue verbale directeur municipal plein de mesures collectives de groupe de transport Rito, GTA, suivant la motion vingt-neuf deux, prononcé par le conseil le neuf mars vingt, vingt. Mr. Kadelakis, are you beginning this and then handing it over to Mr. Morgan?
No, we're just gonna go straight to Mr. Morgan, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Morgan, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we have, we have a deck that we prepared to provide an overview of the status, so I'm just gonna go straight to slide two, just to kind of give an update and frame where we are in the process. So, as you know, we issued a notice of project co-events of default to Rito Transit Group on March tenth. The, the notice RTG included the reference to a contract requirement for them to provide a follow-up plan to improve the performance of the system. We followed up a day later with, with a detailed list of issues that we needed to be addressed in that plan and that we needed RTG to give us a schedule on. We gave them a deadline of March thirty-first to provide that plan. RTG did provide a plan on March thirty-first, and they did respond to all the elements in our letter. We took that plan, we reviewed it with a group of external advisors, technical advisors, as well as contract advisors. And we identified a series of issues that, that need further clarification. We identified a series of timelines that need further clarification. So we've gone and we've sent that back to, to RTG to provide, to provide that information. So just, and just to give you some of the context, while they did respond to each of the individual items in our list that we provided them, they didn't provide an overall date back to the city on when we can expect service to improve. So we're still kind of waiting for, you know, they've given us the action plans for each of the individual items, and I'll go over those in a, in a second, but they didn't give us kind of what are the outcomes? When are we going to see the service improvement? When are our customers going to be able to see a reliable system? So we're waiting for, for that, the outcome in terms of the timeline, and then we're also waiting for additional granularity on how each of the individual fixes is actually going to add or contribute to an improvement of the system. So those are the kind of the things that we, we've gone back to RTG, and we've identified areas where they can essentially revise their plan, where we need them to revise their plan in order to meet our expectations. So go to slide three now, just to talk a little bit about some of the things in their plan that corresponded to the things that we requested. You know, an immediate issue that, that they are facing today is a shortage of auxiliary power units, they're known as CVS units. That's actually keeping two vehicles out of service at the moment, and we understand that it may be keeping additional stage-two spare vehicles out of service as well. So they don't have the root cause to that issue, they've mitigated the issue through other changes and modifications they've made to other elements of the vehicle, but they don't have the root cause to that issue, nor do they have a, a good handle on the actual availability of spares to keep the fleet fully functional. So that's kind of a critical immediate issue that they need to deal with.
So, yeah, Mayor, is there a deck accompanying this?
There is, there is a deck.
Caitlin.
Mr. Mayor, the PowerPoint presentation was circulated by email by one of my staff a few minutes ago. It is also saved in the council shared drive and the council SharePoint site. I can resend it to any members who may have not have received it.
Okay, thank you.
So we're just on slide three at the moment, so we talked about the critical issue. In RTG's plan, they identified a number of short-term modifications. They haven't identified how each of those individual modifications contribute to a service improvement, but we know from, you know, having worked with them closely on these issues that they, there is benefit to implementing these changes. Vehicle brakes, so over the winter, we occurred, as you recall, severe outage of vehicles due to wheel flaps, and there are probably four or five things that contributed to those wheel flaps, but one of the critical things was the train control system, and so they're planning to do a train control upgrade in May twenty twenty. Passenger doors, you know, ever since we opened, has been an issue. They, they have an upgrade planned for July twenty twenty. That software is subject to a FIL safety certification process, which is an independent third party that advises them on the, the safety case for that software. So, and once we get that, then they're looking at doing a rollout by July. Vehicle traction power, so the other, there was kind of two big things that happened over this last winter. One was the wheel flaps, we've got a rash of wheel flaps for a couple of weeks, and we also had these major, major outages where we talked about, there was discussion about dirt and grime and other things on the power electronics on the roof of the vehicle. So they've made a number of changes there. They're changing the control system that handles how the circuit breaker works on the roof, and that will help for faster recovery of vehicles if it ever occurs in the future. There's a modification of the line contactors, and they have identified, in this case, the root cause of the problem was a manufacturing defect with the inductors, and so we're glad to see that the root cause is identified. We've asked for some more information on that. They put in some good mitigations in the interim, but they've got a long-term plan to swap out those inductors to make sure that we have good inductors on the roof of the vehicle. So that's, that's the third one. And then the fourth bullet there is, there's a number of kind of other minor software updates and changes that they're planning on doing in the, in the coming months. Again, we don't know exactly how much that will contribute to a service improvement, but we're tracking that closely. So, you know, out of all of that, all those short-term fixes, we know that because they will have some benefit to the system, we need to sit down with them, sit down with RTG, have a detailed planning session to see how quickly we can get these fixes onto the system, onto the trains and onto the infrastructure, how quickly can they roll them out, what are the roadblocks? We need to get in a room with them or get virtually, virtual room to discuss how we roll that out. Can we bring things forward? Can they accelerate things in their supply chain or resources, whatever it have, have you to, to kind of make, make the system perform at the level it should be. I'll move on to slide number four. So in addition to the short-term modifications, they identified a series of longer-term modifications that address other issues that, that council will be aware of. We've had a couple of different issues with the overhead catenary coming down, one, the rigid rail in Saint Laurent Tunnel, they did identify a root cause for that issue. We're looking for some more details on that root cause and more details on a future mitigation. Some of the wire drops that we've seen, I think we've seen two of them now, linked to a parafill failure, so we know what they, they've kind of, they've identified the initial root cause, but they haven't identified fully the fixes. And so we need to get, to get together with them, understand what their plan is for the fixes, push them hard to do the fixes as quickly as possible. Switch heater upgrades, vehicle HVAC, specifically the heating and cooling to the driver's cap. They've come forward and they've accepted that it's not compliant based on the performance that they've seen, and they've committed to doing some fixes. We need to find out what those fixes are, make sure we're satisfied with them. And there's a series of other kind of secondary, longer-term fixes that they've identified in response to our plan, where they've agreed to, they, they put forward kind of details on what they plan to do, they put for rough details on the timelines of, of when those are. We really need to get in a technical workshop with them, understand more of the background, push them harder on coming up with fixes and making sure that they can, that put out timelines that are reasonable and that fix these things quickly, so that we can kind of provide some assurance back to, back to the city and the riders that the system will be reliable. If I move on to slide five, slide five deals with a number of organizational or maintenance practice issues that we've seen with their organization that is essentially undermining the reliability of the system. They've come forward with some good ideas, they've got some changes they're making to the light maintenance bays in terms of how they handle power in those bays, which is very good. The solution they proposed is very good, but they've suggested it will take six to nine months to implement that solution. And so we need to get back with them and understand why the timeline is so drawn out, why, what opportunities are there to advance that? Similarly, looking at the staffing levels, they have given us information about how they've increased staffing levels, but we need to see that matched against a resource-loaded schedule to know that the level is right. They've increased resources, they've admitted that, but we don't know if they've increased them sufficiently or if they've aligned the correct resources to the specific issues that we're seeing. They, they do need a bit of a, a focus on supply chain, we have seen some supply chain issues over the last six months. Certainly the fact that we've got a couple of vehicles out of service right now because of missing their parts that are under repair is a problem for the fleet. And then generally, you know, we know, and they've been well-publicized, you know, they've had three or four incidents in their yard at their facility, and we just need to make sure that they clean that up. You know, anytime they have any issue in their yard, that's going to affect our service, that's going to affect the ability to get vehicles out into service, and so we need them to, to tighten up that work. They're planning on doing some things with training, which is good. We'd like to see a little bit more in terms of engineering controls and additional kind of support and work to, to the staff that they have at that facility. So there's a couple of things there, and we've, we've gone back, we've asked Rito Transit Group to provide feedback and additional information to kind of support their plan. If I move on to slide six, it's worth noting that throughout their plan, the, the timelines and the, the details was heavily qualified by potential impacts from the COVID-nineteen pandemic, looking at issues with getting specialists from overseas, parts from overseas, even supply chains within North America are slowing down significantly. And so they've, they've essentially qualified all of the timelines in their plan against, against kind of the backdrop of the current environment. The overall timeframe to improve the service to get us back to where we want to was unclear, and so we've gone back to them on that, asking for additional detail. They have done a number of things, and they do have a number of activities in progress. However, generally, at the end of the, kind of our summary view on their plan, is that it didn't meet our requirements under the project agreement, so we've asked them for a revision of that plan. Specifically, there's, there's three things that we want them to, to look at, in addition to kind of clarifying all the background information I spoke about previously. We need them to show us greater details on how individual fixes, fixes contribute to service improvement. It's nice to have a list of fixes, but we need to know which are the most critical fixes and which ones give us the most, will have the most impact on the service, most improvement on the service. They need to do that and identify when those will be in place and when service will improve. Once they identify the critical activities, they also need to identify how they're resourcing those critical, critical activities, so we're clear on, you know, that, that their plan is realistic, that they say they're going to swap out this many components in this amount of time is underpinned by an actual resourcing plan that's sustainable. So those are three things that we need them to do in, in their response, in addition to clarifying background information, clarifying the timelines and why timelines are, are dragging out. I'll just move to slide seven. So I guess just, this is just kind of a look at the next steps. In order to correct the project co-events of default, our notice that we sent to them, they essentially need to deliver on and execute a plan where they correct and improve the performance. Until such time as they, they improve the performance, those notice of defaults will exist. So they don't go away, they have a plan, they're working on a plan, we've asked for a revision, which they need to provide, but so long as the system underperforms, that event of default exists. So next steps with us and RTG, we're gonna hold a planning session with them to review how quickly they can execute on some of these known fixes that they have in hand, how quickly can they roll them out to the fleet and to the, to the infrastructure to improve service. We also need a technical workshop to push them on the other areas where they're unclear on the root cause, where additional work, additional background information is, is required to, to ensure that the system improves. So we're gonna hold these additional sessions, we're gonna look forward to RTG's revised plan, and we expect a report back to council sometime in May with kind of the outcomes of, of those sessions and, and any progress on work that have taken place. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's the, the summary of the presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Morgan. So we'll go down the list. If you have questions or comments, now is the time, and if you don't, you can simply say pass, or if someone has already raised your issues, you can let us know that as well. Now, welcome, I'll see that councillor Darousse, please.
No, Mr. Mayor, I just wanna thank all the team that have been working on this file. I know it's very important to most residents in the street of Ottawa and the answers and the mitigation, so we're very happy with that, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Moffett.
Thanks, just, just one, and maybe I missed it. There was a comment made recently about how, how certain staff, certain key players with this effort have had to return home. How are we managing through that, especially with, obviously, the, the group that was brought in from Britain, I imagine they've all gone home. So how are we managing through that and, and running this to make sure that what we expect to happen is actually happening?
So they have, you know, a number of their suppliers are based in Europe. That certainly affected the, the supply chain for, for those auxiliary power units, it affects, you know, the availability, you know, also have a lot of staff in Italy, a lot of staff in France and Spain, and so just trying to, you know, keep on top of where those people are in the process. You know, it's, it's pretty early to tell what the impacts are long-term of not having access to those key staff, but certainly the supply chain is affected and the, the resourcing has been affected. I don't know, John, do you have any other comments on that?
Mr. Mayor, I, I believe Mr. Moffett was, or the councillor Moffett was referring to JBA. So last night, I, I've asked Peter Lausch to give us what role, if any, JBA will be playing in this process. He has confirmed that they were not involved in the actual rectification plan, but that they, they are still engaged, and he is scoping out what their role will be.
Anything else, councillor Moffett?
Yeah, and I just brought it up because obviously we are doing our best to manage the situation in Canada, but then you look around the world and you see a hundred and three thousand cases in Italy, a hundred and nine thousand cases in France, fifty-five thousand cases in the United Kingdom, and these, these countries are gonna be accessible for us for the foreseeable future. So I just wanted to, to just put that out there, that hopefully we have what we need from them while they were here in order to be able to ensure that our system is, is doing, is doing much better when we finally get out of this ourselves. Thanks.
Great, thank you. And councillor Fleury, and you can raise your other issue at this time as well. And Counselor Fleury, and you can raise your other issue at this time as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll begin by that one, which was the response to inquiry relating to testing of various climates here in Ottawa. The 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 response is fulsome to the vehicle, but not fulsome to the track and stations. Could we get a point of clarity as to, I mean, what was done in preparation for the opening as it relates to stations? That it be escalators, elevators, tiles, climatization of some of the the catenary and other examples in this context?
Yeah, we can. The inquiry was specific to the the testing that was done at the NRC laboratories, and so I'll just comment on that quickly. So it's common with vehicle procurement, not all procurement, but many procurement to do static testing or partially dynamic testing in a facility like the one that the NRC operates in Ottawa, and we're fortunate to have that one here, where they can do tests such as, you know, building up six millimeters of ice on the doors and then demonstrating that the doors work. So some of those tests that you do in an indoor test facility are really to be able to measure the performance of those systems where you can against the specific technical requirements in the contract. And so, you know, the idea of testing ice buildup on the doors or on the front windshield or other things, we're not, the industry doesn't rely on Mother Nature to to help us with that test, those tests. They tend to put those vehicles into a facility to to make sure that they can, to the extent possible, verify that the systems work correctly in cold and hot conditions. And so that was the benefit that we had of the of the local facility here. So that the winter testing broadly, you know, there's other functions that are undertaken mitigations, for example, the snow clearing equipment that was procured by RTM. They would have used that equipment on the system multiple times, and then, you know, there would have been a series of tests, for example, clearance tests, gauge tests, effectiveness tests to demonstrate that that the snow clearing equipment works. There would have been a series of as part of, you know, operational running and testing of the vehicles, you know, over the course of of a winter. You obviously get to see the benefit of the switch heaters, and obviously there was changes made to the switch heaters, which as a result of the first winter, which may not, which in our view not sufficient. Typically, the the work on the switch heaters is backed up by field support, and we've seen that didn't work effectively this last winter. So, you know, in terms of testing of the track itself, there's nothing really done other than to to keep it clear, keep it clear of snow to make sure that it handles the the cold temperatures. Obviously, when you've got a large swing in temperature from from hot to cold, that puts enormous strain on the rail, and you're looking to make sure that you're not getting rail breaks or or other issues like that. And so, you know, a lot of that work was done kind of in situ as part of the that final winter testing commissioning and was used to essentially document how the system would perform during winter.
Thank you for for that. Wondering if you're able to share with council, I understand the inquiry is specific to the vehicle, but is it possible to share with council additional information as to what they've done in the overall station specifically for in preparation for winters? And then maybe lessons learned from the last winter of some of the the correlations to to climate issues?
Yep. Well, you know, I can provide you a quick, quick verbal update now, and then obviously, you know, follow up with some more detailed information afterwards, if that is acceptable. So the stations, you know, there's a pretty, pretty strict requirement to the EPA that there's not, there's only supposed to be trace snow and ice on the on the station platform. And so early on in the process, RTG installed, made the decision to install platform heaters to to deal with that requirement. And so obviously, all those platform heaters were tested and different things were done over the course of at least one winter to to make sure that was working correctly. There was additional, you can test them really any time of the year, but they're fully loaded during winter. So there's the platform heating. You know, we've noted a few locations where the platform heating was tripping out, and so that's something that's on the list of things to be repaired by RTG. You know, the other thing that that was done during the design phase is the microclimate studies to understand, you know, where, what ways are the prevalent winds blowing? Where are you going to get snow buildup? What is the drifting going to look like in the stations and around the stations and the access to the stations? And so a lot of the microclimate analysis informed the design and the positioning of the roof line. We have seen a couple of, a few different locations where we see some snow buildup on the roof falling into public areas. You know, there's, so that's something that we've raised with, we've raised a non-performance report with RTG on that issue to address that. So that's kind of one of the things that that we'll be taking away and applying to stage two is understanding, you know, where we have cover over public areas, where there's a roof line that's adjacent to a public area, to make sure that that's treated correctly. And then the last thing that I would just kind of highlight is, obviously, we saw some issues with the slippery floor surfaces, certainly where where there's a stairwell in close proximity to to a door opening were especially problematic. But just broadly, you know, there was some during kind of the interim period when we get a snowfall and people are tracking snow into into the stations, we saw some issues that that we need to tighten up as part of the stage two station. But I'm happy to go back and and work on kind of a fulsome summary of what was done on the station and what was done on the track for you, if that helps.
Yeah, not a rush on that as we're heading into the spring/summer, but would be would be nice to to have that heading, you know, and ensuring that next winter we don't see the similar types of issues. Now on on your presentation, and it'll be my last question, Mr. Mayor, I'm I'm curious because one of your point relates to timeline. So I guess my question to you was, what's the, what's our timeline on their timeline? Because, you know, we we were clear on the failures. You've provided pretty, pretty good briefing here as to what they responded back, but I'm curious, what is our expectations of timelines for the a full resolution of their identified approaches and issues?
Yeah, I mean, on on the issues, you know, because they they are seeing some supply chain issues and some other impacts, we, you know, we've just, we've had the the plan in our hands for six or seven days now. We really need to kind of get into a room and push them and understand what what are the the underlying factors affecting or driving their timelines to see where we can't push them to do something more quickly. We, you know, I think, I think there's been, you know, various kind of comments made about when we would like this back up to normal service levels, but I would say, you know, my expectation is tomorrow. But obviously, we need to get in a room with them and understand how they can roll out the short-term fixes to to contribute to the service improvement.
When you can, please share it with us.
Yep.
Sorry, Counselor, did, I think you just got cut off. Counselor Fleury, are you still there?
I was just saying, when when you can, share it with us, Mr. Mayor. My questions are done.
Okay. You'll see. Counselor Elshan Tiri, please.
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to our staff for their presentation.
Thank you. Counselor Egli, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of quick questions on the presentation, and then, Counselor Fleury, I have a couple of quick questions on my, on the answer to my inquiry. So I'll go to the presentation first. Again, for some reason, I'm not getting the the slide numbers, but there's a slide, Mr. Morgan, at the top, it says corrective action plan one.
Yep.
And it indicates that there's a date there. Is that the date that they're going to start to implement the solution, or is that the date by which they estimate the solution will be will be fully fully implemented?
So, for example, on vehicle break, it says May 2020. So we don't have any more granularity than that on their plan. We also don't have full agreement on how they were going to roll out that software, you know, in terms of is it overnight shutdowns? Is it during engineering hours? Is it something else? Is it some kind of early access on on weekends? So right now, they've only provided us with a month for that one, for example, and so we need to get to do that planning session to to understand from them, you know, how, what's the fastest way to roll this out? Let's pin down a specific day, you know, when we expect that to be done, a couple of days when when we expect that to be done, so that we have a better sense of when it's going to be up and running. Similar bachelor doors, they've just indicated July 2020 that it will be complete. Some of the other ones, breaker controls, June 2020 complete. You see the line contacters, they've given us more of a timeline because it's modifications to individual vehicles that can happen incrementally. That's a bit of a rollout plan. You know, can we bring back the October 2020 date? Is that, are they just being conservative, or is it there's something else underlying that? And then replacement inductors? That one, obviously, we're not thrilled at all to see anything going into 2021. The mitigations are working, but, you know, we need to understand in great, much greater detail why why that can't happen sooner.
Okay, sure enough. When you make reference to COVID-19, does that mean that in the date they've given you, they have factored in COVID-19, or they're saying these are dates and COVID-19 may impact them even further?
It's the latter. So we we have asked for a kind of a a schedule that would be would be kind of completed absent of COVID-19, and a second schedule to be to be kind of to consider the impacts of COVID-19 so that we can kind of understand what what is the true impact. Right now, they're just saying, you know, here's our timeline, but they're they're at risk because of the current environment.
So even the 2021 date that you you're concerned with, that could go even further, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Going back to something Counselor Moffett raised about the outside consultants, I appreciate that, you know, they're probably back in Britain, but surely they could be engaged in some sort of a remote fashion to to work with RTG and to review the results. Is that being considered?
I, we'd have to get back with Peter Lausch to see what, how much they're using those resources. You know, obviously, some of these plans, it's, you know, it's just remote working. You don't need to be, especially the engineering specifications and planning work, you don't need to be onsite to do that work. And so that's, I think that's a question that John will be putting back to Peter.
Okay. I think I think it's a good question. You know, what we've gone through so far, it wouldn't be bad to have a a second set of independent eyes on on this plan and and its efficacy. So the, jumping to the to the inquiry, if I could, the term used in the inquiry to respond is that it's, it met basic functionality, and yet we saw huge challenges over the winter to to the the ability of the system to run efficiently. So can you explain what basic, like what what the term basic functionality means? Seems like it was a fairly low bar.
Well, so, for example, you know, the example I provided was the door operations, and so they they will close the door, and then the facility will, they will apply freezing rain and have ice accumulate on on the side of the door to a certain thickness. And then, you know, once they've achieved, you know, once they get the appropriate thickness according to the standard, then they will demonstrate that the door works correctly. That's kind of one example. Another example is they will spray, you know, snow at the front windshield and and measure, you know, how well the vehicle does that kind of keeping the windshield clear of snow. So they, but all those tests, they're all kind of, they're done in this facility, you know. So so sometimes you see a difference between when you have a vehicle in a facility, you know, it may operate differently than when it's out on the track moving around. And so I think that they do as much as they can in that facility to to try to tease out issues. You know, one of the issues that they clearly found was, so there's also a water test where they essentially are, they they put it into a shower and spray it from every direction, every angle, to demonstrate that all the windows, all the door seals, everything prevents water from getting into the vehicle. And so that test was very effective at, you know, finding a few spots where there was problems, where there needed to be corrections. And then I think that we've seen our our experience with the vehicle so far is that we don't have an issue with driving rain or rainy conditions with water getting in the vehicle. So that's kind of one area where the test was effective. You know, the door situation, the windshield situation, some of the other external systems, you know, because they're not moving, because the brakes aren't kind of activating, going up and down all the time and and riding along the system, it's, there's limitations to the task. So it is an industry-standard test, and it's common on on vehicles to do these tests, but there are limitations to it.
Okay. So this is my last question. So the inquiry was specific to to the testing that done at the NRC labs, and I understand that that obviously they were working with a stationary vehicle and, as you say, spraying with this or spraying with that or adjusting the temperatures in the in the chamber. Is it fair to say that there was, there was no moving train tests in in anything like winter conditions?
Correct. I mean, I think that there are subcomponents of the vehicle that were moving, doors opening and closing, windshield wipers activating, brakes up and down, but nothing.
So I don't mean, I don't mean just just in the labs, Mr. Morgan, I mean in general.
I guess broadly, it, you know, so you do the lab test, and then when you go up into the field, you know, you just try to take advantage of of the weather that's thrown at you during the testing period to demonstrate that certain functionality to that.
So in a lot of ways, the past winter was the was the testing facility for how the train would actually operate, move in in weather conditions. Is that fair?
This would have been the second winter.
Sorry, sorry, sure enough. But I I guess I'm saying, the first time that the train hit the tracks in actual Ottawa conditions, running, that was, that was the test.
We, well, you know, a year ago, we did, we were operating vehicles in winter conditions, and so that would, that would have been the first test. And then this would have, this past year would have been the first true test with passengers and the fully loaded system and and stations operating and everything, everything kind of happening at the same time.
Right. Okay. Thanks for that, Ms. Morgan.
Great. Thank you, Counselor, and thank you for bringing the inquiry forward. Counselor Hubley, please.
No, I'm good, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor McKenney, please.
Hi, it's Catherine. Can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Okay. Sorry, I, yeah, listen, I just had one, two questions, actually. I guess it's, it's evident that this, the notice of default was was necessary. It, it's a bit shocking to think that we're here today and and not, not much closer, really, to to the the fixes that we need for for service improvements. And while, you know, the the questions that were asked previously by Counselor Egli did respond to some of my, some of my thoughts, some of my questions, and I, I do understand that RTG has a plan, that their plan is impacted by the impacts from the COVID pandemic, you know, and that there were planning sessions going on with a report coming back to us in May. I wonder if staff could just provide us with their thoughts on how confident they are that the, both the organizational and the individual fixes that are needed for the service improvements will be put in place and that we will see and we will get the the system that that we paid for.
So I would, I would say on the the fixes, a number of fixes that are that are in progress, we've seen some good preliminary results from those fixes, which gives us some comfort that they're, they're on the right path. That being said, you know, once you get past the first three or four where there's known issues, you know, we need a lot more confidence in the next group of issues and their timely resolution in order to be comfortable that the plan is solid. At the same time, I would say, you know, they need to be ready to respond quickly to new issues. On any light rail transit system, you get, you know, some, there are issues and, you know, there are issues that arise all the time. And it's really to the extent, the extent that you respond to those issues and correct them quickly helps you maintain the service. And so while they've, you know, responded to, you know, the issues that we know today, we also need them to be ready. we also need them to be ready from a technical perspective and an organizational perspective to, to deal with any new emerging issues. And so there's a, when we look at the organization, there's a bit of kind of, they, they, they get ready to, they organize themselves to deal with the known issues. And, you know, that needs to be, we need some additional backup and demonstration through our resource loaded schedule and other things to ensure that they can deliver on the plan that they've put ahead of us. But at the same time, we also need to know that they've got some capacity within their organization to deal with new issues as they arrive. You know, we've just come through a winter and so we know all the winter issues or we, or at least they're all fresh in our mind, but we're approaching a hot summer. And as they're still dealing with the remnants of some of the modifications that came out of winter, are they going to be ready to, to deal with the issues that, that will arise with the hot summer? And so we need to, to answer the organizational part of that question, I think we need to do a little bit more work with them to understand how their plan is supported by resources from either supply chain or experts or even just field technicians, vehicle technicians to undertake the work.
And on the organizational issues, is it just, I mean, they, they obviously have the, the capacity within their organization, is it just that they're not providing that to us? Is it that we're not getting the, the workforce and the, the people here on this system now that it's, you know, bought and paid for to ensure that, that it's happening? Is that, is that the key organizational issue that we're looking at right now with, with RTG and, and also them both?
You know, I think there's, there's a few things that we're considering. The, the biggest thing is for them to kind of state, take a step back and say, what, what is the, the number of staff they need just for steady state maintenance? And layer onto that, what are the number of staff that they need to deal with the backlog in a timely fashion? And then you lay on that, what do you need to deal with new emerging issues? So we don't have a clear picture of how they've come up with their numbers, how they've justified the, the kind of setup of the organization. They've been making changes, they've been kind of reorganizing and adding people, but we still need a better information on how they set up their organization to be able to deal with all the issues that we encounter.
Okay, well, well, thank you, I, I appreciate that. I know that you're coming back in May to counsel with an update. So my last question, I think, can, can wait until then because the question then is, you know, what is the plan if the, the fixes aren't in place for, for next winter? But I, I think I'll, I'll table that question until May. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor McKenney. Conseil Cloutier, s'il vous plaît.
Merci, Monsieur Mayor, no questions on this item at this time.
Merci. Council Sands.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Council Luloff, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Morgan, we've experienced several switch issues east of Saint Laurent. Is this issue being worked on as part of the switch heater remediation that's noted in the slide deck?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes, it absolutely is. One of the things, I mean, they've identified, RTG's identified items in their plan to deal with switch heaters. What we thought was missing from the plan is really, you know, an assessment of the performance of those heaters on a location basis, you know, identify which ones had, had a higher number of failures and making sure that we're as aggressive as possible in, you know, implementing new solutions at those locations where the failure rate was just unacceptable. You know, a switch failing one time over the course of a winter doing a heater is okay. When I go back and look at the records of the team, the four critical switches near Blair Station failed 11 separate times, you know, this past winter. So that says to me that that location needs some additional attention and they need to do more than just tweaking at that location. They need to roll out a big fix to make sure those four, and there's a few others anyway, have, have the full treatment and absolutely work 100% of the time next winter.
Great, we really appreciate that and I know that our eastern commuters certainly do as well. Are we still on time with the announced changes to Blair Station?
The, sorry, Counselor, I'm not immediately familiar with, are you talking about the changes to the platform structures?
Indeed, yeah, there were several remediate, remediative measures that were announced and discussed, things like, you know, additional redundancy when it comes to lifts, you know, moving bus routes. We talked about a, a third stairwell access. So I'm, I'm just looking to, to find out whether or not these projects have still been moving forward despite the, the pandemic.
Yeah, unfortunately, Counselor, I don't have that information with me today, but I can follow up with the team that's looking at that to, to get you that information.
Okay, great, yeah, we just want to make sure that once we can, I'll go back to work and get back on public transit that, you know, we haven't been slowed down by, by what we're dealing with now. That's it, Mr. Mayor, thanks so much.
Thank you. So we'll get an answer for Counselor Luloff on that, please, Michael. Counselor Brockington, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and thank you, Mr. Morgan, for the presentation. The letter that came from the city, March the 9th or 10th, that went to RTG, my understanding was that their initial reaction was quite strong and did not agree with the city's assessment that they were failing to deliver. You acknowledged they did respond per the timelines, but can you just talk about that? Have they acknowledged, in addition to providing a report on some of the deficiencies, have they at least taken ownership of the deficiencies and the lack of service in their letter to the city as a response?
I can't, you know, I don't want to go too far down the contractual path. I can, I would say that they, they have disputed the default, but that they accept that they, that they will work cooperatively with the city to implement solutions to all of the issues. So they may not agree with the letter, but they have agreed to put a plan together and to work proactively to correct these issues.
Okay. And, Mr. Mayor, can I just ask one question about Phase Two?
Uh, yeah, with the will of the council, agreed? Go ahead.
I simply want to know how COVID-19 will or will not impact the construction timelines of Phase Two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we have, we have received, obviously, notifications from the, the two teams that are building the extensions indicating that there will be impacts from COVID, indicating, you know, some slowdowns in their supply chain. But it's too early to tell if those issues can be mitigated. You know, I guess we've got the Trillium Line's two-year project and then Confederation Line, you know, a longer project than that. So we're not sure what the kind of long-term impacts are going to be, but there's certainly been notifications made by both parties that, that this current situation will have an impact.
Okay, and, and the scheduled closure of the Trillium Line of May 3rd remains?
The, the closure remains. In, you know, we've been checking in with the Trillium Line team on a regular basis to make sure that they're still ready to go, and they are. And we've also been keeping in touch with the MTO who's doing the bridge replacement or the Trillium Line in the, at the 417, just to make sure that they're, they're still a go and we haven't, right now, everything is still proceeding.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thanks, Counselor Brockington. Counselor Dudas, please.
Yes, thank you. I, I just have a couple of quick questions. So are we still withholding payments from RTG and have they indicated that they're going to need the money from those payments to institute these fixes?
Uh, we, we are still withholding the maintenance payments. You know, we are kind of advancing through, through that issue, trying to assess where, where and if in the near future we would expect to pay them. We're, we're not at a point yet to say that yet, but certainly we'll provide that feedback to council when, when we think that they're, do a maintenance payment. So we're not, not quite there yet. In terms of the second point, no, there's been no comment about, no connection between the capital fixes and the, the maintenance payments that's been brought to my attention as of yet.
Okay, thank you for that. I wanted, this is maybe just for, for some clarification. The need to hold, the need for the city to hold a planning session and a technical review session with RTG, to me, it sounds a little bit like handholding, and maybe I'm misinterpreting that. Was the plan that you received what you were expecting and did you anticipate that you were going to have to go through this extra step of leading them through these fixes?
We knew that, we, we knew that we would need, have to have a workshop at some point or a planning session or a technical review session. Certainly, the planning session is critical because as we roll out new software for the train control system, that relies on city's electric rail operators, city's rail controllers to participate and be actively involved in those tests. So it's a bit of a joint effort. So for example, if we're doing additional testing overnight, then, you know, it's, it's fine for them to put a date on the calendar saying that they're doing it this weekend. You know, we need to have staff lined up and we need to have the appropriate safety briefings and if there's necessary measures in place, given the current environment, we need to have all that in hand as well. So it's, some of the, some of the items need city's active participation in order for them to actually do the work. And so for a number of items, we, definitely the case where we knew that we would have to have that joint session. And then for a number of other areas, the information is not as fulsome as we would have liked. And we think that the most effective way to get that information is to have a, a review with them directly so that we can ask questions and, and prod at their assumptions and really push them on how quickly they can deliver on the issues.
Thank you. I, I guess I needed that clarification in respect to that. But when, so you indicated you'll be coming back to council with feedback on that, those sessions in May. What can we expect to hear in that report back?
Well, one of the things that we're trying to, what was, what is missing from the plan is how do the individual fixes contribute to an improvement in performance of the system? So for example, they've said that they were going, they're fixing the inductors. But with the inductors fixed, how much does the service improve? When you fix the train control, how much does the service improve? Typically, this would be mapped out in what's called a reliability growth plan, where they essentially know what the reliability is today, they would overlay the potential fixes to all those issues and then on the outside, at the outset, they would have kind of an output saying, this is what the performance is expected to be after we apply all these fixes. Now, you can do that retrospectively, that you go back and say, if these issues hadn't happened this past winter, this is what the performance would have looked, would have looked like. You can also do that kind of looking forward to say, after we apply these five fixes, this is when, this, this is what the service should look like and therefore, this is when the service should improve. So we're looking for a kind of clear timelines for when the service will improve. They've done a good job of responding to the individual items, but they haven't done a great job of responding holistically to say, this is how, once we kind of put all these things together, this is when the service will improve. And so that's kind of, that's, that's what we need to get from them and that's the feedback we would be aiming to provide back to council in May.
Okay, thank you. I think it's just, it's absolutely imperative that transit users, residents of our city and us, and we as council, have confidence that we're not going to let up on them to deliver results. Because as I recognize, and we all recognize around this virtual table, that, you know, we're in the midst of a pandemic and that has impacts on all of this. I just, I'm looking, I guess, from assurance potentially from city staff, that we are not going to let their deliverables slide. We understand timelines might have to shift slightly, but are you still in a position where we have the power to get the fixes we need for our residents?
We, Mr. Mayor, I threw you to the council. Absolutely, we, with the, the event of default still persisting in this period, you know, the pressure is on them to, to correct these issues, to improve the performance. I can tell you, you know, right from, you know, rail operators in the field all the way up to John and to Steve, you know, their regular calls, keeping the pressure on RTG to improve, improve the performance. There is no let up on the amount of pressure we're putting on them to correct these issues.
Okay, thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Counselor Dudas. Counselor Tierney, please.
Uh, great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think a lot of the points certainly have been covered and I, I do appreciate, it will take time to get some answers, especially even to the Blair Station. Counselor Luloff mentioned that, he scooped me on it and, but we're all very concerned in the east that we keep progressing. And I think, you know, even hearing Catherine's concern, many, we're all kind of on the same page on this one. We just, I, I feel that, you know, fool me once, shame on, shame on you, fool me twice, it's a shame on me situation. So I'm hoping we get the, the best guidance from staff as we proceed through this. That's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Shirelli, please.
I'm good, I'll pass.
Thank you. Counselor Kavanaugh?
Yes, thank you. I may need a, an exemption. I just want to ask if we're going to tie this into what's happening with Stage Two because we're seeing this work getting done and I think people have lost a lot of confidence in the system. And I just want to know how we're reporting out so that we can prove to the public that we're going to see improvements that will enhance Stage Two. How are we doing that?
We're technically not on that item, but I believe there is a, a monthly update that goes out to members of council, Michael, on Stage Two, and that can be shared with the public.
Yes, we, we do it all the time. I'm specifically asking in terms of what the, the concerns are with, with the Confederation Line now and, and how they're repairing it.
I think, I think that was, that, that was asked by Counselor, who was it? I can't recall now. Flurry? I don't, did you miss that? Because he basically asked the same question that you're asking now is in terms of delays. Did you catch that?
Just in terms of, I'm asking if we can report out in that light so that we can talk about how these things are going to be addressed so that Stage Two will not have these problems.
Yeah, we, as you know, we have a, a regular update that will come to Fedco, it'll probably be the next Fedco, whenever that is, we'll probably be in the same situation with telephones and so on. So that, that will come up, I think, at the next Fedco meeting, which would be the appropriate time to raise it. Do you have anything else on, on the, the RTG report, Counselor Kavanaugh?
Not, not that can be added, it's already been covered.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Gower, please.
I have no further questions at this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Counselor King?
Uh, just thank you to my other colleagues who've asked questions around timelines, so no further questions for me.
Okay, thank you. Counselor, uh, Amian?
Thank you. Actually, most of the questions have been asked, in particular, Counsel Brockington's question on acknowledging the problems with the train. So if, do I understand correctly, each one of the problems that we identified, they've acknowledged and taken responsibility for?
Yes, they've, all of the items that we sent to them in the letter, they've acknowledged those and they've responded to them.
So when they came back at us, after we launched the default and said that we, they wouldn't, they were unhappy with the list, so they've recanted that now that they've taken responsibility? Okay.
Thank you. Counselor Harder?
Thank you, no questions, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Menard, please.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I, I'll start with just, what was the cause of the power line collapse in January? I think we heard that they had talked about it, but we don't know what the actual cause was, if staff can just update. Uh, so there was, I mean, it's the two events that I'll talk about, getting a bit of an echo.
Sorry, can someone be put on, can we put someone on mute because it's having an echo effect? Okay, go ahead, Michael.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, someone still has their, their phone on. If we can put everyone on mute? Okay, go ahead, Michael.
So the first, one of the critical events that we had was at St. Ron's, the rigid rail was pulled down and they essentially ripped the wire out of the rigid rail for an extent of, I think it was roughly eighty to a hundred. The root cause for that was, so off the one end of the rigid rail, there's a bit of a tail of copper wire that sticks out. The maintenance team were using that tail to attach a ground shunt. And so it's a safety device that people put on when they're working in the field. And over time, that may have loosened that tail such to the point that it dropped and got snagged by the next train. So, so there's some maintenance practices on that that are being updated, as well as, you know, the, an inspection update that's being done. And we would look also to, to see if there's any engineering solution to that issue. So that's something that we're going to push them on a little bit. The second one, second time, the wire was dropped. This is kind of outside of St. Ron's station where the, the catenary came on and dropped onto the top of the train and we had to evacuate the train. That is due to, there's essentially a cross member which uses a bit of a non-conductive rope to keep the catenary in place. They're seeing degradation of the fittings on those cross members. That's resulting in them failing and, and the catenary is dropping. So they've got an inspection program to go and look at all of those for corrosion. They're working on a solution to go to either a stronger sheath rope or a, essentially a parafill or a synthetic rope, or stainless steel fittings. They don't have the exact timing on, or exact solution that they plan to deploy on that one, nor do they have the exact timing, I suspect, because some of it is likely linked to supply chain issues. So there's a couple there with, with potential that need fixing that they've indicated that they're working on the fixes. So we just need to work with them to sort out the timelines for those.
Okay, thank you for that. And you mentioned that, you know, you're concerned about RTG not showing a sustainable plan to make the fixes they've promised, as well as some concerns around the dates for certain items. So 2021 for inductors as an example. So I guess the question is twofold. My understanding is we were going to come back and either accept the plan that they're putting in place or not. So that's still happening, but you're saying that's going to happen in May now? That's when the decision would get made to accept their plan or not?
At this point, we've asked them for, to revise the plan and resubmit it.
So just, what does that, what does that mean? Do we still have the opportunity to say, yes, we believe the plan that you're putting forward and we're going to go with it? We trust you to execute it or not? Is that not, is a decision we still have to make when they resubmit that plan? Or are you saying that we've already accepted their plan, but we want some additions to it?
No, we haven't accepted. We've asked them to revise and resubmit it. And, and we've kind of held our interest whole and.
Whoops, I think, Michael, did we lose you there? Michael?
No, I'm still here.
Okay, sorry, it was cut off for a moment, go ahead.
So we haven't, we've asked them to revise and resubmit. And so we're still waiting for that revision before, you know, before we accept anything. So we haven't accepted it as is, looking for specific revisions. And we haven't given up any of our rights in respect of saying, this plan is a hundred percent and now we're just going to track it to completion. We're still looking for a revision to the plan.
Okay, that is helpful. And I think, Mayor, I think if you mute your mic, it helps us, or just to turn off that mic? Okay, because then there's no echo. And then the last question I have is, is what can, are we preparing contingencies now in the event that we do not accept the plan that they're putting forward based on not bringing the, to make these fixes sustainably or do them by a certain date that we're looking for? So are we putting in contingencies now to say, we may be looking at bringing this service in-house? We may be looking at other providers? Are those contingencies being discussed and worked on now?
I think that's councillor, Mr. Mayor, through you to the councillor, that's kind of within the contractual lane, you know, our next steps. And so there's work being done on that in the background, but we're not prepared to disclose that at this time. We're not able to disclose it at this time.
Okay, that's good for me, thanks, Matt.
Sorry, was that it, councillor? I didn't hear the last part.
Yes, that's it, I'll follow up with staff.
Councillor Leeper, please.
Thanks, Mayor. No, councillor Menard actually covered exactly the ground I wanted to run, thank you.
Great, thanks, councillor Leeper. Excuse me, okay, now back to item number four. Reports rising directly to council following cancellation of the April 7th Fedco. City debenture issue and councillor Moffett and Egli have a motion, an amending motion. If councillor Moffett, you'd like to read it out? I think it's been circulated to everyone.
Councillor Moffett? Yes, thank you. So I'll just start from the start here. Whereas on January 27th, 2010, city council established a debenture committee to improve the city's access to financial markets and increases the potential savings in its debt service costs for projects where the debt has already been approved by council. Whereas the debenture committee was comprised of the mayor, the vice chair, the finance and economic development committee, the city manager, and the city treasurer. And whereas on December 3rd, 2014, city council eliminated the debenture committee, which although had proven to be an effective means of ensuring that debenture bylaws are enacted in a timely manner, faced significant challenges with regards to coordinating the various schedules of the members of the committee. Therefore, be it resolved that the recommendation in the city debenture issuance reports be amended by adding the following afterward period, and that this delegated authority be reviewed at the first in-person council meeting once COVID-19 emergency has ended. And be it further resolved that during the midterm governance review, staff be directed to examine the possibility of re-establishing the debenture committee. So the benefit there, of course, is that if this, if this uncertainty with the markets, if the volatility with the markets continues through this and into 2021, that we have established the debenture committee that can, can sort of meet ad hoc much easier than, than full council can. And then it also, it also ensures that we have a discussion about this entire issue at the first possible opportunity following the, following the COVID-19 emergency.
Okay, thank you. So we'll go down the list for, if you have a comment or a question on either the amendment or the main motion. Councillor Daruz?
No, Mr. Mayor, I think this is a very good idea and you got my full support, so I vote yes.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Moffett, I think we, you can speak again if you'd like, but you did already. Conseil Fleury, s'il vous plaît.
Just to be clear, we're not voting right now, right? We're just asking question? Is, questions or comments now?
To our, to Wendy, to our CFO, wondering if, I didn't hear in your presentation anything as it relates to markets. Are you, are you expecting, expecting anything that council should be made aware of in that, in that environment?
Mr. Mayor, just to answer your question, I did speak of the markets in the presentation, just in the sense that they are volatile currently. And the reason we put this report forward in terms of the approval that we're seeking to issue the debenture is really to benefit the best pricing in the market as soon as that happens. Because we basically have, I want to say, a 24-hour window to act. And so it means that we would get the best price possible for the city in terms of the debenture issuance.
Thank you.
Merci. Councillor Elshen Tierney?
No, I'm good, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Councillor Egli?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am seconding the motion brought by councillor Moffett. So I am obviously in support of that approach. What's on the table now in the main report, as I understand it, and I thank Wendy Stephenson for making some time to discuss with me this morning. There's no new money involved, we're not changing the budget, we're working within the budget we've already approved. We're allowing some nimbleness and some flexibility to get the best deals possible for residents of Ottawa in very trying times. I think, so I think that's all good. I think the motion that councillor Moffett and I are bringing simply adds a layer to that and says, you know, if, if, if this isn't working, this is what we think is going to work. If it's not working, then we can look at it, we'll look at it as full council, as part of the review for midterm governance. So I think it crosses the Ts, dots the Is, and allows the city treasurer to do what she thinks is best, makes, to make the best recommendations, recommendations for the city taxpayer and for the city as a whole going forward. So I'd ask all my colleagues to please support the main report as amended by the motion brought by myself and councillor Moffett. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Egli. Councillor Hubley, please. Questions or comments?
No comment, I support the motion.
Thank you. Councillor, councillor McKennie, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes, I do have a couple of questions. On the, on the main, the main motion, to, when we, if, if I could just get a clear explanation in what is the difference between, and what's the gap, I guess, in terms of nimbleness and what, what the mayor is allowing, giving extra authority right now, which I completely understand under the Emergency Act, Emergency Declaration Act, and, and this. What, why, why did the treasurer, I guess what I'm asking is, why did the treasurer feel that this was a necessary step to take in addition to what's already in place?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the question. I think there's a couple of points there. In terms of, you know, what's the difference here, we have done this in the past. We did, took the same approach in 2017 and 2019 when council was not meeting over the summer months. And specifically in 2019, because of the nimbleness and the approved authority that we had in place, we were able to save over a million dollars in terms of what we would have spent or had to have placed in terms of the expense of issuing that debenture over the life of the debenture. In terms of today, as I've spoken, the markets are a bit erratic, they're a bit volatile right now. And so what this does is it puts that same authority in place that we had in place in 2017 and 2019 for us to act very quickly, to be able to get the best price and the best result for the city, where we would ultimately save some money in terms of what we have budgeted and approved in our budget.
And is there, I understand 2017, 2019, when we approved the delegation of powers policy, that, but there was an end date. With this, there's, there's, as far as I can tell, I mean, it's to fulfill the 2020 budget mandate. But there's no clear end date. And I'm not certain that I agree with councillor Egli that the amending motion, which I do support, gives us the ability to, at some point, if we feel, you know what, this is not working, we have this, this, you know, this backup in place. So if you could just respond to those two questions, like what is the, what is the end date on this? And what does the amending motion do to ensure that today, if we, if we approve this moving forward, that we have the ability as council to, to take back that delegation of power?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that question. The, the report does give an end date, so it takes us to the end of 2020. So we're not looking for any authority beyond that. What I would note, I think of relevance and importance to, we're not the only city that asks for something like this. And in fact, when I look to my colleagues at the city of Toronto, they actually have blanket approval given to them, it's delegated authority to staff to issue their debt up to a certain limit each year. So it's very much in line with what other municipalities are doing. In terms of the motion that's before you today, it really aids to the nimbleness and the ability for us to obtain the best deal in the marketplace and to act very quickly because the market will change daily. And I'm going to say that market is going to change outside of what's actually going on during the pandemic, but just regularly, it fluctuates. So it really allows us to get in there, secure that deal, and make sure that we can sell our debt and do it for a very good low price.
Thank you for that. And my last question then to you is, I mean, obviously, there's, there's always the ability to call an emergency meeting, but you, in your estimation, as the city treasurer, you feel that, that nimbleness you need would be, on an even shorter term, it could change day by day, hour by hour. Is that, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, that would change day by day, yeah.
Okay, thank you, I have no other questions.
Thank you, councillor McKennie. Conseil Cloutier, s'il vous plaît.
Merci, Monsieur Mayor. Just a quick question to the, to the treasurer, and thank you very much. Ms. Stephenson, how would you report when, if this motion passes today? How would you report to council and what will be the timelines for you reporting to council when debt is issued?
Mr. Mayor, when we do execute the deal, if this is approved today, we report back in a few ways. So first is through the bylaw that is executed from the actual purchase. And that bylaw is extremely detailed in terms of the debenture issuance and all of the components of that. So that will happen very quickly after this. What you will also see in our financials that are typically presented to Fedco in May of each year, we report back on our debt levels there as well. So that happens annually.
Anything else, councillor?
Yeah, just, I will absolutely be supporting this, the motion. I just want to remind my colleagues that financing is completely separate from budgeting and the approval process that we went through on December 11th, 2019. This does not provide any additional budgeting or, or expenses. And again, the capital markets are volatile and delaying, not relying on our financing experts to prove, to get the best deal can cost our taxpayers thousands, may hundreds of thousands of dollars in increased interest. And so I will absolutely support this, this motion and the amending motion.
Merci. Councillor Sides, please.
No concerns or questions, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Luloff, please.
Always good to get the advice of an accountant, thank you for that, councillor Cloutier, I have no questions, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. Councillor Brockington, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm generally supportive of, of the recommendation before us as well. Just wanted to ask the treasurer what she envisions the frequency of debenture issuance will be in 2020. How many times will we be going out to seek debt?
Mr. Mayor, I would suggest that it will likely be once, if we're able to secure a good rate in the marketplace, and possibly a second time.
Okay, I mean, that, you know, it just strengthens the argument why we should pass this. I would just suggest to alleviate some of the concern that flared up in the community that your staff report was a little bit light. And my only suggestion would be, you made a really good point in answering one of the questions about how in the summer, having the authority to issue the debt and have it basically right away save taxpayers' money, that's a great point. And would probably just alleviate some of those concerns that we've heard the last day or so, back to your recommendation. But always to say, I will be supporting it.
Thank you, councillor Brockington. Oops, I think we have someone on hold there. Councillor Dudas, please.
Oh, I'm here. So I have no questions. I think they've all been asked. And I think that, you know, knowing that at a time when we're trying to find every penny to save money when we're faced with such volatile markets and uncertainty with our, with our financial situations, anything I can do to support saving money for the taxpayer, I'm pretty amped with. So I fully agree with this. I'm very comforted by councillor Moffat and councillor Egli's motion, and it put some end dates to this. So I'm happy to support the amending motion and the, and the report.
Yeah, I think that's a good, good point. Whoever asked the question about the savings, we're going to have to look very hard for savings all over the corporation as we head down the next several months. Councillor Tierney, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, first of all, I'd like to hear all about the savings. That's great. I think this is more about how much control is given to a municipality. And I would like to ask Rick O'Connor, which is probably the, one of the most brilliant minds all through Ontario on municipal legislation and how we actually interact with the province, which let's face it, we're a corporation of the province, how we fit into this puzzle. Are we doing something completely different than any other municipality, or is this pretty common?
Mr. Mayor, I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily say it's pretty common because I wouldn't have that data in front of me. But I can advise all members that you are well within your rights under the municipal act, under section 23.1, and also under all of the statutory requirements with regards to passing bylaws. I would also add, Mr. Mayor, just as a procedural point of view from the, from the treasurer's financial aspects earlier, when I read the amending motion, the first resolution, and I was asked an earlier question, the first resolution allows for an earlier review of this particular delegated authority as soon as the emergency is actually over, and that would be before back committee and council. And then there's a second opportunity with the second resolution, which would be during the midterm governance review later this summer, early the fall. So I think there's a couple of times before December 31, that council will have another opportunity to look at this particular delegated authority.
Wonderful. That's all the questions I had, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Tierney. Councillor Shirelli, please.
Thank you. I will be supporting the amendment, the Moffat-Egli amendment. I think it's one of the best things either one of ever done, and very smart. And I remember the, when we had a debenture committee, it was generally thought of as the most boring committee at council, and nobody would ever come to watch it even. So, but it still served its function very well. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Thank you councillor Shirelli. Councillor Kavanaugh, please.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate all the work that has been put into this. My question is, is I just wanted to get an idea of what kind of sums are generally thrown around of these things, like in terms of, what is the dollar value that is, is, is being, we're talking about in terms of the, the, the kind of debt or the decision making? I think people would like to know that.
Mr. Mayor, to answer your question, in terms of this issuance, we would look to issuing a debenture upwards to 300 million to 350 million. And I will just echo the comments of councillor Cloutier in terms of the budgetary approval. So we went through the process in terms of our budget. The, the amounts were addressed there in terms of us being able to service this piece. So it's all been approved, and this is simply the issuance of the debenture that goes out to the public for people to purchase and make investments.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's very helpful.
Thank you councillor Kavanaugh. Sorry, anything else councillor?
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Councillor Gower, please.
Thank you. I have no further questions or comments.
Okay, thank you. Councillor King, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that update concerning the timelines for the debt issuance on the capital markets, along with the change in terms of the amendment to the amended motion, I can support it. So no questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you councillor. Councillor Mean, please.
No questions. We'll support it as amended. Thank you.
Thanks councillor. Councillor Harder?
No, Mr. Mayor. I was the vice chair, actually, in 2010 of the debenture committee. It worked as it needed to, and there were never any issues. So I'll be supporting.
Do you still have that on your resume?
Probably an old one.
Councillor Menard, please.
Thanks very much, Mayor. I'm in support of the amendment, the Moffat amendment. I do have some questions about the main motion bill. In this case, might there be capital project items that we approved in the 2020 budget that because of the challenges that we're seeing in front of us today, that we may not be pursuing as a result of a budget situation?
So, Mr. Mayor, to answer your question, a good portion of this debenture will go into financing our LRT, purchase of buses, and the, some of the infrastructure projects around roads. So I think it's, when I look at the plausibility in terms of cancellation of any capital projects, I'll go back to Mr. Kanaakis' comments and mine in terms of, first, our intention is to go through what I call the whips. So our work in progress, where those projects have largely wrapped up, and we're going to look for savings there first, before we go into any of the capital envelopes.
Right. So there is a cha, I mean, you're saying that there is a potential that we do look at some capital projects that were approved, to reconsider them, after we go through already approved projects that we can have savings on. I just want to be clear on if it's staff intent to review the capital projects we've approved in the 2020 budget to potentially say yea or nay to some of these, or I guess may, may to some of them, given the financial situation we find ourselves in.
Mr. Mayor, just to answer your question, in terms of that, I think that the first piece that we would look at is really pausing those projects. So can we push them out a little bit longer in terms of our cash flow? So that's the piece. I believe in terms of the conversation that we've had about other capital projects, we'd look at some of the smaller ones, and those would not necessarily be funded through debt. They'd be funded through our capital reserves or cash.
Okay. And so that's helpful, very helpful. To the clerk, I just wanted to ask you a question about if staff had to act quickly, how fast could they set up a council meeting, let's just say over the phone?
Mr. Mayor, you can have a council meeting with six hours' notice under the procedure bylaw.
Okay. That's very helpful as well. And that's, that's my concern with this, is I want to see, if you could just turn your mic off, whoever has it on in the chamber? Thank you. I just want to make sure we're, you know, in moving forward, we're doing this for a very good reason, because I know we can come in quickly, and we all have a vote around this council table. And, you know, to, to, I guess, give that away is a big decision. Should be a big decision. Doesn't mean you can't have the same savings. It just means you have to act quicker. And if we're only going out once to do this, or twice, that to me seems a reasonable thing to come back to us for. So I guess I'm going to make, I'd like to put forward just an amendment, a very brief amendment. I don't think I'll be supporting the main motion for the reasons I've just mentioned. But I do want to put forward an amendment that I think will help in case it does pass. And so it's that an email be sent to all councillors in advance of the intent to enact the necessary bylaws for launching a debt issuance. So once we feel we want to do this, that an email be sent to us, and we proceed from, it would be perceived from there based on the motion that's in front.
Sorry councillor, I don't know of others. I could not make out what you're saying. There's something wrong with your microphone or your telephone. Can you try to repeat that, what the motion is? Does the clerk have a copy?
Yes.
No, okay.
Yes, Mayor, I will, I will repeat the, the motion. It's a simple motion. It's adding a clause that an email be sent to all councillors in advance of the intent to enact the necessary bylaws for launching of a debt issuance.
So can we get a comment from the, the city manager or treasurer? Is this going to impact our ability to move quickly?
Wendy, it's up to you. You're executing it, so you say.
Mr. Mayor, we can certainly send an email in advance if it's just a simple notification. That's, that's not a problem.
Okay. Well, why don't councillor Menard, we just put that as a direction to staff?
I'm fine with that. Either having it approved or staff, a direction to staff, that's fine. I do have concerns with the main motion and
Sorry, I hear you again. Sorry, it's really hard. You were, you were really clear about a minute ago.
Okay. Hopefully this improves. So I, I'm still concerned about the main motion, and won't be voting for the main motion, but I will be supporting the amending motions on this. I do think interest rates are low right now, and they're going to stay very low for the foreseeable future, in my view. Thanks.
Okay. So on the, the motion by councillor, oh, I'm sorry councillor Leeper, yeah, forgot you. Last but not least, the Leeper.
Thanks, Mayor. And I think I'm hearing the, the struggle the councillor Menard is having. The scenario that I think councillor Menard is alluding to is that there may be significant debt finance projects that we may look to as a council as a source of cost savings. And by vesting in yourself the ability to sign off on the issue of new debt without coming to council, that may see some projects that we all slap ourselves in the forehead later, thinking, hey, we should have stopped that. So I do appreciate staff's willingness to take councillor Menard's direction. And as long as I know that that email is going to, you know, give us some time to think about, about this, I'm in a position to support the main motion. I, I will say, I don't see any scenario under normal circumstances in which the treasurer comes to council to ask us for permission to borrow, telling us or advising us that now is the time, and us telling the treasurer, no. I think we do put ourselves in our hands, very capable hands, with respect to trusting our judgment as to when to go into the market. But I do want to know that we're not going to wind up moving ahead with a project that at the end of the day, we may have decided in hindsight we didn't want to move ahead with, in these extraordinary circumstances. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
This is Jen, not muted. I just wanted, before you go to the vote on this, or I just wanted to have clarification on the direction. Unless I heard it incorrectly, the direction to me is the antithesis of what the motion is. So if you don't want to vote for the motion, don't vote for the motion, and then there'll be a, you know, there'll be the normal process. But to give direction, to have to send a note to council to notify, it just, it defeats the nimbleness of the need, I believe, and the opportunity. And that's why we allowed it in the past, and it's worked very well. So I just need somebody to correct that, to clarify it.
So
Thank you.
Thank you councillor. To the treasurer, is this going to impede or slow down the process, Ms. Stephenson, if we were to, I guess it would be basically, you know, just as you're ready to go and make the decision, a notice sent to council as an information item? Is that, as you interpret it, Ms. Stephenson?
Mr. Mayor, yeah, that's correct. It's a notification. It is not a decision point.
Okay. All right. That's, I think that clears it up then. Okay, so we have the, sorry about that councillor Leeper, I had a sheet of paper over your name there. Councillor Moffat, seconded by councillor Egli, motion carried?
Carried.
Any dissents on the Moffat-Egli motion?
No.
No? Okay. On the main motion as amended by Moffat-Egli. Carried?
Carried.
Okay. Any dissents?
Dissent by Menard.
Dissent by councillor Menard. Okay, so councillor Moffat, we're back to you now as motion to adopt reports, motion pourtant adoption de rapport. Do you want me to read that out councillor? Are you okay? Do you have it with you?
Thank you very much, yes. That's the following report we received and adopted as amended. Agricultural Affairs Committee Report 12, Built Heritage Centre Committee Report 12, Finance and Economic Development Committee Report 12A and 13, that the following reports from the Finance Services Department entitled City Debenture Issuance, 2020 Budgets and Small Special Levis for Business Improvement Areas, and Spark Street Mall Authority, Report on Budget Expenses Pursuant to Ontario Regulation 2028409, Disposition of 2019 Tax and Rate-Supplied Operating Surplus Deficit, and 2020 Tax Ratios and Other Tax Policies. The following reports from the Planning, Infrastructure and Acton Development Committee or Department entitled Designate 300 Coventry Road as Amisible Capital Facility, and Sale Land 1960 Merva Road and Part of Slack Road to Patrick Butler in Trust. And the report from the city clerk entitled Summary of Oral and Written Public Submissions for Items Subject to the Planning Act, Explanation Requirements at the City Council Meeting of February 26, 2020.
Okay, so on the motion by councillor Moffat, seconded by councillor Dudas?
Carried.
Carried? Any dissents? Sorry, any dissents on that? No? Okay. Next is motions of which notice have been previously given, motion donne avis a été donné entièrement, moved by councillor McKenney, seconded by myself, and I believe there was a replacement motion, councillor McKenney, or some changes to, oh, not in this one. Okay, sorry. So councillor McKenney, would you like to introduce it? Maybe just go to therefore be it resolved?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes. I will therefore be it resolved that the general manager of Planning, Infrastructure and Economic Development, be delegated the authority to enter into a cost-sharing agreement with JADCO Incorporated and Claridge Homes Incorporated with the offset limit of the city's contribution being 250,000 funded by right-of-way heritage and urban design services revenues. And be it further resolved that as part of city staff's review of the encroachment bylaw currently underway, that city staff review how to minimize the impact of temporary construction encroachments on all modes of mobility, including consideration to how pedestrian facilities are maintained throughout zero lot line development. So this is, yeah, it's pretty straightforward. It's a signalization that we will cost share with the two developers who, as a result of the development that's going on on the Paine Street, were having to close down half of the street. And they have agreed as part of that mitigation to cost share the signal that would be fully warranted in the future.
Okay. I got a chuckle out of the fact you said it's straightforward, and you and I are moving and seconding it.
Well, there you go.
Does anyone have any questions to the mover? On the motion, carried?
Carried.
Any dissents? Okay. Motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure. We've got the first one from councillor Leeper, seconded by councillor McKenney with respect to Forward Avenue in a state of disrepair, and there's a timeliness around this. On suspension, carried?
Carried.
Any dissents? So councillor, councillor Leeper, would you like to introduce the motion, please?
Thanks, Mayor. 159 Forward Avenue is the
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, 159 Forward Avenue is the former Family Avenue, uh, sorry, the, the former family shelter. The, um, CCOC has won city funding to proceed with a, uh, replacement building there that will focus on affordable family housing. There are timelines associated with getting certain permits, um, from the province, from the funders. Things are complicated at the moment because of the provincial order with respect to essential workplaces. But I've been working with, um, uh, Mr., Mr. Willis overnight to bring the following forward that will give them the certainty that they'll have the permissions they need from the city to move forward. So without getting into the whereas is, I'll just read the therefore be it resolved, if I can get my screen working properly, there we go. Uh, therefore be it resolved that council approve demolition control for the existing building on the property, subject to the following conditions. The landscaping of the property shall be finalized in accordance with conditions established by the General Manager of Planning, Infrastructure and Economic Development. Mayor, I don't have a second page. Is there a second page?
Let me just see here. Uh, yes. Do you want me to read it?
Thank you.
Uh, the registered owner shall enter into an agreement with the City of Ottawa to include foregoing conditions and pay all costs associated with the registration of said agreement. At such time as a building permit is issued to redevelop the site of the, uh, and the replacement building is in place, the agreement will become null and void and will be released upon request of the owner. The owner shall pay all costs associated with the release of the agreement. The registered owner agrees that a demolition permit will not be issued, and the building cannot be demolished until such time that the agreement reference herein has been executed and registered on title. This approval is considered null and void if the agreement is not executed within two months of the end of the current provincial state of emergency. So, um, any questions or comments to the mover? On the motion?
Your worship.
Sorry?
Your worship.
Counselor Shirelli?
Uh, Shirelli, yes, I have to leave the meeting now for medical reasons.
Okay, duly noted, thank you. Uh, Counselor, so on the motion by Counselor Leaper, seconded by Counselor McKenney on Forward Avenue, carried?
Carried. Carried.
Any dissents? Okay. Uh, our next motion requiring suspension of the rules of procedure, motion exigeant la suspension des règles de procedure, Counselor Egli, seconded by Counselor Tierney, uh, with respect to reinstatement of curb cuts and so on. There's a timely, um, there's a timeliness about this motion. On suspension of the rules? Carried?
Carried. Yes. Carried.
Any dissents? Uh, Counselor, Counselor Egli, the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, this is a motion similar, I think Counselor Brockington brought a motion like this, uh, in the last couple of council meetings. Uh, we've got a project that's about to, uh, about to go to tender in the next couple of weeks, and that's the timeliness piece. Uh, it's, uh, it's a major road work on a number of streets, Walford Way, Farlane Boulevard, Hilliard, Millbrook, Crescent, Deer Park, and Fisher. Um, and it's just, uh, just a request that if we go in and we muck about with your driveway or your front lawn, we put it back the way we found it. Uh, we've done a number of these over the last year or so.
Okay, does anyone have any questions or comments to Counselor Egli? On the mo- on the motion, carried?
Carried, thank you.
Dissents? None? Okay, thank you. And the next motion is by Counselor Suds, seconded by myself. Again, a timeliness issue with respect to COVID-19. On suspension, carried?
Carried. Carried.
Any dissents? Uh, Counselor Suds, if you'd like to introduce your motion, please.
Excellent, yes, thank you very much, Mayor. Fairly self-explanatory, and as noted timely. Uh, in essence, uh, the motion is asking that the city move forward with installing our large Canadian flag on City Hall, uh, and that we encourage residences and residents and businesses to, uh, display their Canadian flags to show their support, uh, for the efforts of all of our frontline and essential workers in the city. Um, I'll read the, I'll read just the therefore be it resolved. Uh, council approve large Canadian flag to be prominently and proudly displayed at Ottawa City Hall as a sign of support, and that council encourage residents and businesses to proudly display Canadian flags to show their support for the extraordinary efforts and team approach of all frontline and essential workers in our city and across Team Canada until the emergency has ended.
Okay, great idea. Thank you for bringing that forward, Counselor. I know a number of people have already started doing that. It'd be great to see the big flag back up at, uh, City Hall at our end of our place. Uh, yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Who's that?
Counsel, Counselor Brockington.
Okay, sorry, Counselor, go ahead.
May I just suggest that, um, to help promote this, that the city also identify shops in Ottawa where people can purchase a flag online?
Yeah, I think, I'm, I'm only aware of, I think, one, uh, flag shop, but there are others that sell flags, I suppose. Uh, sure, maybe we take that as a direction to, uh, Public Affairs Office.
Okay.
Mr. City Clerk? Okay, great, thank you. Uh, so on the motion, carried?
Carried.
Any dissents?
Thank you.
Any dissents? No? Okay, thank you. The next motion requiring suspension of the rules is moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Dudas with respect to the hotel levy for, um, health workers. On suspension, carried? Uh, any dissents? So this, as you know, we're in the midst, obviously, of this pandemic, and a number of, um, individuals in the healthcare field are wanting to be isolated away from family and so on if they're working in the healthcare sector. Uh, and hotels are offering, um, a significant deep discount, and in many instances, the employer, either the hospital or the provincial government, pay for the, the hotel room. And this is to allow us to not charge the municipal accommodation tax, the MAT, uh, which Ottawa Tourism has agreed to not receive it as well during this pandemic. So I'll just read you the, um, the therefore be it resolved that council exempt frontline healthcare and essential workers from the application of the municipal accommodation tax for the duration of the emergency declarations issued by the province and the city, and delegate the authority to the CFO to prescribe eligibility criteria and determine when tax exemption is lifted in consultation with Ottawa Tourism and the Ottawa Gatineau Hotel Association, and that the chief financial officer notify service providers accordingly. Uh, any questions or comments? This is not a revenue loss to us. It would be a revenue loss to the Ottawa Gatineau Hotel Association that funds Ottawa Tourism, but both organizations are in agreement that they shouldn't be charging healthcare workers this tax at this time. Any questions? On the motion, carried? Add up to end?
Carried.
Any dissents? Okay, are there any other motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedures? We have none here at the council chambers. Uh, notices of motion for consideration of subsequent meeting, avis de motion pour exémerre réunion subsequent, Counselor Tierney and Dudas have a, um, notice of motion. Counselor Tierney?
Uh, great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I won't read the entire thing. You'll all receive a copy of it, uh, prior to the next council. But in a nutshell, I want to thank Counselor Dudas and Counselor Luloff as well. Uh, this has always been a struggle. Blair Road essentially goes down to two lanes. There's over 430 buses that go through that segment to the south end of Orleans, uh, as well as to Navin. Uh, it's been, uh, there's no safe cycling facilities. It's very dangerous. And, uh, currently it's tied into the Brian Corburg-Cumberland Transit Way, uh, project. And they're all essentially two different projects. This is staff-supported. This isn't queue jumping. So, uh, therefore be resolved that staff be directed to separate Blair Road widening from the Transit Priority EA study, from Brian Corburg-Cumberland Transit EA study, so that the Blair Road portion can be a standalone project as an EA study. There be it further resolved that the Blair Road widening EA study assesses the option of combined HOV lanes and addresses pedestrian and cycling infrastructure and connectivity on the Blair Road, to the Blair Road LRT station. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so we'll deal with that at our next meeting. Are there any other notices of motion for consideration of subsequent meeting? We have none from the clerk, okay. Uh, Counselor Moffett, seconded by Counselor Dudas, motion to introduce bylaws, please.
That the bylaws listed on the agenda under motion to introduce bylaws, three readings be read and passed.
On the motion, carried? Any dissents? No, okay. Uh, next is the confirmation bylaw. Counselor Moffett and Dudas, please.
That the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting of April 8th, 2020.
Carried? Any dissents? No dissents? Okay. Uh, Madam Deputy Clerk, any inquiries? Uh, Counselor Moffett, Counselor Dudas? Adjournment?
I don't have a motion in front of me, so I'll just wing it. So moved.
So move for adjourned. Carried? Carried. And just to remind everyone that the press availability will be beginning in 15 minutes, approximately 3 o'clock, and I want to wish my Chief of Staff Serge Arpa happy birthday today. It's his birthday. So happy birthday, bon fêt, Serge. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.